All right, we will call the Monday, January thirty one, two thousand twenty twenty, two thousand twenty-two Urbaneville City Council meeting to order an S. Take roll call, please.
Blake?
Here.
Carberry Montgomery?
Here.
Kroll?
Here.
McBurney?
Here.
Obrath?
Here.
All right, uh, is there a motion or a second to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second amendment. Second amendment, Bernie, discussion, roll call.
Obrath?
Yes.
McBurney?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Blake?
Hi.
Thank you.
Starting out better than Saturday.
All right, AJ, I'll turn it back over to you and Nikki on continuing discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, why don't we start at the, where did we leave off, Nikki? The... Yep. So... Services, right. Budget tab, we have...
Um, yeah, so that one's in the Health and Social Services tab. It's Community Services, the one and only department that we have within there. Um, so looking at that one on, um, HS three is where that section starts. Um, if you will recall, this is the item that we transfer in. It's, uh, ten percent of the Polk County fifty percent that we can use for non, um, property tax reduction. So it just outlines the few things that are being covered by that, um, that are what we talked about on Saturday, the hotel motel items that actually transfer over to this budget so that you can, uh, contribution, the food pantry. Um, the other, uh, one that came through this year is the walkie christian services. Um, the Neighborhood Finance Corp., this is the last year of the, um, scheduled contribution, but I understand that that program will be continuing and they will be bringing forward additional, um, expansion, extension, however you want to say it, of that program. So it's probably not the last year that that would be in there, but it falls under that, um, Health and Social Services category. And then the Metro Home Improvement Program, um, and Section Eight Housing Support for the City of Des Moines, who runs that Section Eight, uh, program for us. This also incorporates all the Civil Rights Commission, various expenses. So effectively, these were things that were in the other budgets prior to us developing this, uh, department. And so we pulled it all in under one umbrella so that it could all be captured as, uh, the city's contribution in that area. So the things that we have to talk about, um, as far as the percentages that are going, so the ten percent, um, equals three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we went up from three oh five to three fifty. And then the, the civil rights and stuff, that doesn't count towards the lost portion. Those are pieces of general fund that had already come in. So you'll see the total revenue, um, coming into that fund is three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That incorporates the pieces, um, the Metro Home Improvement used to be in the community development budget. So we didn't use part of the loss. That's truly new money that was coming in. So that's why it doesn't quite equal three fifty is because that's only the lost portion. So the way you can see it there, um, if you look on HS four, they, they, it looks kind of like they're all over the board. Effectively, what I proposed here is just giving you flexibility to determine what those uses are. It can be under any of those categories. So the numbers that are in the twenty-three column, two hundred and thirty thousand, that represents the things that we know or have been proposed to be, um, adopted within the budget, things we know we're going to send out the door. The rest of the balance is down in the operating supplies line. That's the to-be-determined number. So, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven fifty. So those are unallocated. There's a subcommittee that was working through trying to decide how you best want to allocate those funds. So they're available for use during the year. We just don't have a name on them quite yet of what that, what that, what those dollars are going to go for. The one thing that you have historically given is to the MAC program, um, and that was one that because that's an internal fund, we would normally show that down under transfers. So if the council wants me to go ahead and include that, that way I don't have to amend the budget because it can't be an expense. We have to transfer it to a different fund. It goes to the MAC fund. So that's where that thirty-five thousand, if you look down it towards the bottom of that page, historically, it's been down there as a transfer because that's the amount we physically transfer out to the MAC Special Revenue Fund to be captured.
Why don't you have it there? We didn't discuss it.
Because you haven't decided what to, if, if that was intended to be an ongoing, every year you've reaffirmed that, and I didn't want to be presumptive in that. So we have that as an option. Um, I know that they brought up about the van, those kind of things. That was here for you to discuss what you want to do with the MAC, if you would like me to go ahead and move it, and at what amount.
And I guess, I know Saturday was so long ago. Um, MAC this year is also looking for an additional ten grand increase, and this thirty-five was to take it to a second location initially, and then are looking for an additional ten grand increase. Are we really looking at forty-five for MAC is the support, or was that ten from Saturday out of property tax?
That was actually part of the operating budget that was proposed in there. So it's not taking into account these dollars yet because you had not allocated those yet. So...
So if we don't allocate these dollars, what has MAC done that they wouldn't be able to do this year?
It would be the, so the ten thousand was for, the ten thousand was for the mobile MAC, um, using our current fifteen-passenger older van. Um, so that was...
Mic on.
Thank you. So the ten thousand would be for the, the mobile MAC using our old van. And then we had talked about funds for getting a new van, and I think we have some numbers today.
Yes, Scott did, uh, research that. Our Patrick Halsey pulled up, um, sorry, should have printed it.
Actually, I have it right in front of me.
You have it right in front of you?
I do, yes.
Look at you!
So for a new cargo van, and that a fifteen-passenger van, we're looking at forty-nine thousand, and for an electric option, sixty thousand. Those are the two options for a mobile van, for a brand-new, for MAC.
And the clarification on the electric option that we talked about is the, because we talked about could we get this fast enough to do it? We obviously don't have the infrastructure for it. The unique thing about this is the Ford E-Transit, um, that it uses a regular one-twenty outlet. So we would not have the infrastructure cost to be able to implement that right away. So we wanted to make sure and bring that forward to you as there actually is an electric option that we could plug in literally in the hallway.
Anyway.
It's, not that I would recommend necessarily the extension cord option, but, uh, we have the parks.
Roger Semel doesn't like to...
Yeah, we talked about that.
It takes longer on a one-twenty, um, but my understanding is that the, so the old public parks shop that's right across here in this parking lot, in the bullpen, they have a, a one-twenty and a, a one-twenty and a two-twenty accessible, so it could charge there. You wouldn't even have to take it down.
We would just charge it.
Yep.
You'd probably look at it, probably additional, probably an additional over that, maybe another ten thousand to get it wrapped and equipped.
Yep, so we looked at about seven thousand to get it wrapped, um, with the logos, just so it, we're not the creepy van that shows up to a park.
Thank you.
And then... I was definitely thinking about that on Saturday.
The creepy white van.
So we...
And that is to a fun logo. Is a creepy white van, yes.
With the ice cream music playing.
Right. We're trying to stay away from that. So, um, so a wrap would be about seven thousand. That might be a little high, um, we're hoping. And then we said to fully stock it, six thousand. So what we're looking for, for a mobile MAC van for this year, using just a, a regular gas van, would be sixty-two thousand for the total. If we went with the electric van, we're looking at seventy-three thousand. And this would be fully stocked, um, and again, wrapped. The ten thousand that we had talked about, that you guys had talked about on, uh, Saturday, would be just using our fifteen-passenger van that we have now, and then the costing for the staff. About three days a week is what we were looking for.
How many miles per year do you estimate? Do you mean to be, have you estimated? I mean, just so we can kind of figure out useful life of the thing and, you know?
I do not. I mean, we're looking at doing three to four days a week. If we got the brand-new van and everything, I would hit it pretty hard. I'd be pretty aggressive with our schedule for the summer, but I wouldn't be looking at a lot of miles.
And it'd only be, it'd be more seasonal, too.
Yes, it would be more seasonal.
So it's not going to get a lot of miles per year, probably.
Yeah, right. The current van has a ten-year useful life assigned to it. The brand-new one that we had, the used one that we bought is technically at its end of useful life. Um, so we're kind of on borrowed time with that one. But, uh, the, uh, the new one that was purchased now, two years ago? Has it been here eighteen months-ish?
It has been there ten years. We have it.
Two cycles. Yeah, it was a ten-year, ten-year useful life for our side, but the low mileage, we evaluate all of those at the end. So as long as it's running well.
Yeah. I would think we can be able to get at least ten years of it.
I would think at least ten years out of it, yeah.
But then MAC, so current year budget, we had thirty-five grand in for MAC to happen. If we don't have that thirty-five grand coming out of loss for MAC to happen next year, what drops off the programming? Or is that already been absorbed somehow?
Good question. Um, it is grant-funded. We've been really fortunate to get grant funding. So really, the thirty-five thousand really just bolsters up our number of kids that we can invite to the program and the staffing that we can have. Um, what my hope is that we get into Valerius once it's completed, and we can really go to that third site. But really, the, the thirty-five thousand, we have a little wiggle room to play with because we have been so grant, fully grant-funded the last few years. And then, of course, with COVID hitting, that made our numbers go down pretty significantly. And then the one year of hard COVID, we did MAC camp in a box where we just brought supplies to the campers. So we actually do have a little cushion in there that, that we can work with.
Yeah, it's just to expand the, the area, but Valerius was our third location, and now the construction cycle changed with that right about the time we decided to go.
Yeah, right about the time we got the funding, they decided not to, to do the construction. So we're really just looking, we probably wouldn't be able to ask as many kids to come to the program.
Just reduction of services.
Yes.
But the mobile MAC is really a separate...
A total different thing. We just, we kind, we like the name because a lot of people are familiar with MAC in our community. And really, the goal is to reach out and just do, you know, good and, and meet with the kids. And so that's kind of why we took the mobile MAC, the MAC name, and then we just called it mobile MAC to get out there because they've heard of it, they know what it is, and hopefully we can even go to the community where our kids are, our MAC kids are even at, and be in those parks where they're at as well. So it's really a separate thing. Do some separate staff, but hoping to reach those kids. Oh, hi, Scott.
And if I can jump in, can you? Yep, so...
You're breaking up, Scott.
The thing with MAC is, MAC is making a connection, right? That's what it stands for. And, okay, sorry, um, I'm, I'm in the building, but is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Am I still lost? Let me move. Sorry. Is that any better?
Yes.
So I think the, the title of, of the MAC is, again, it's making, and I think one of our goals is, you know, to, to get to the, uh, you know, the other side of the interstate, um, get some interactivities going on and still making those connections. So that's why the MAC title works very well for the mobile MAC program as well.
So I have, I have a quick question. So it sounds like the thirty-five thousand is not entirely needed this year, so you would prefer us looking at the mobile MAC versus the thirty-five thousand for an additional site? Is that the summary?
Kinda. We talked about this. Yeah, I would be comfortable with that. We do have, we're using a little bit of those reserve fundings that we have, and we've been very conservative in the last few years. I would rather put the money towards this mobile MAC thing. I think we can reach a lot of kids. I think we can do a lot of, and not that we aren't with the regular MAC program, but we're limited to about a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids in that program. The, the amount of kids that we can get and reach and, and just the community-wide that we can reach, I'd like to see our dollars go to that. But...
Yes. One other question. You mentioned that the mobile MAC might be seasonally limited, and I would ask, why would mobile MAC be seasonally limited? As we talked about, Saturday was a thirty-seven degree day.
I would argue that it might not have to be.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
I mean, yeah, I would say that we, we could. Why not? We, it would be limited on staffing.
Okay.
I see me out in the parks a lot on Saturdays. Um, but yeah, I think that there's, especially with, you know, going back to the holiday light thing, we could be bringing that on the weekends to the holiday light area as well. So there's a lot of opportunity there.
So then if we kind of brought all of MAC together under this one budget item...
That would be the Big Mac.
Big Mac, yes.
I was waiting to use that. Only quarter till six.
I mean, that would have been a great Saturday joke at about four o'clock.
I'm trying to use that. You gave me the perfect on.
So if we have Big Mac happening, um, Nick, I'm trying to see Nicole, I can't. So that would pull ten grand out of the property tax side and put it at the loss side.
Yes.
And just depending on what number we put here, it gives how much resources.
Correct.
So I guess I'm kind of thinking maybe a hundred grand number in this line for MAC with van, programming, and pulling that ten grand out of the park and rec piece and putting it here. So it's net ninety new, in essence, but at least all of MAC is in one spot instead of having to go try to find it everywhere.
Well, but then we also have the MAC fund and the actual recreation on CR twenty-two, and that was ninety-three thousand.
Correct. So the MAC fund has a special revenue fund because it is grant-funded and, and holds its own checkbook, shall we say?
Right.
So the recreation department contributes in typically five thousand dollars a year. They transfer over to help cover some of those base items. So it is relatively self-sufficient. So that's why it's special revenue. So at the bottom of that page, um...
What page are you on?
Let me just refer to the page.
Um, CR twenty-two.
Right. And I guess I'm looking at that we transfer basically a hundred K into that fund is what we are doing from lost.
Correct.
Because that's, it's, it's its own separate account, basically.
Yes, yeah. So we're not transferring all MAC expenses, just to clarify. So the ninety-three thousand that it costs to run the program will still be paid out of the MAC fund. So it's just how much money you're moving into the MAC fund. So Big Mac is all in one spot? I love that, just...
So maybe that is the name of the van, Big Mac.
That might be a trademark issue.
I don't know.
You got some infringement going on there.
Well, there you go.
Let attorneys figure that stuff out.
Unofficially, in air quotes. Um, and the one thing I would also remind you is that this current budget, so if you look at that page again, um, for...
CR twenty-two.
No, no, the actual one on Community Services. So in the current budget, remember, too, so we had talked about how immediate could that be? And, and I know Scott had said, you know, we can float that. You also have a hundred and four thousand dollars of unallocated money this current year that the committee has not yet allocated. So what I would offer, too, is split the Big Mac between the two. You could fund the van out of this year's allocation and just continue on or do some other, so you don't have to wait and do it all in the twenty-three budget because those funds won't be available until July one. So if we are talking about mobile van needing it now...
So if we did like a sixty-five out of current year and then thirty-five ongoing, that would kind of keep us leveled?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so you could, I mean, because we already have the thirty-five in for this current year.
Right.
So that's already allocated, but then we, whether the van piece could go ahead and come out of this year if you're so inclined to do that. We have not met as a committee to determine how you wanted to allocate those funds, but they are sitting there available. So, and would still leave money on the table. You'd still have thirty-five thousand left.
So you're saying of the two hundred and thirty thousand that we have, a hundred and ten thousand is available right now, or...
So the two hundred and thirty is for the next budget that we're talking about, for July one of twenty-two through twenty-three, okay?
Okay.
So scooch over one column to the FY twenty-two revised.
The one oh four, three hundred, that's, that's available right now. It hasn't been touched at all.
Correct, correct. So we, we took out the, the MAC contribution, food pantry, Ucan, all of those things, the, the, um, Neighborhood Finance Corp. and Metro Home Improvement. All of those are currently in today's budget, but the hundred and four represented that, that we hadn't quite decided what we were going to do with it yet. So those are available.
Okay, and if we, if we pay for the van, what we already have on CR twenty-two, the, the ninety-three thousand that's coming in through grants, that'll still operate everything that you guys need?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what we're just really talking about is if we want to buy a new van or if we want to have a separate site, essentially.
And the separate site really wouldn't be something we could do this year, just because we never work with the schools in other places.
Okay, okay.
And the sixty-two slash seventy-three thousand, that's a one-time...
It's a one-time expense.
One-time expense, so...
For the next ten years.
Once every ten, ten years-ish.
Well, right, right, but...
We have the infrastructure in place. If we wanted to go the option of seventy-three, we wouldn't have to like go out and find a, a separate charging station and...
And with it being electric, we won't lose a catalytic converter, which is super expensive on vans, so...
I laugh, but yes.
Um, and, and that's where I think, charging wise, I think that, yes, it can plug into a one-twenty, but the research I've seen overnight might not be enough. It's sixteen-hour time cycles.
Yes.
So finding out how to use that two-twenty with a charging station might be appropriate.
It made it sound like that was a completely doable, because they have a...
Be about a thousand dollar expense to add a two-twenty charging station in.
Well, and are you pulling this up to a, a place and leaving it running for the entire six to eight hour duration? Or are you just pulling it to park?
Uh, no, and if Scott's on the line, because he's done this program at Cedar Rapids, he mentioned today that he actually just did a mini generator to do some of the stuff that would, you know, that we would use it, the van running. So he would say, just turn it off and we could use this little generator if we needed to. But really, some of the parks that we'd be going to, there's already electricity there. So no, I don't think so. I don't think that we'd run into as many issues with the...
So yeah, with theoretically, I mean, we have like, what, sixteen hours a day that we could plug it in? And, you know, if we're not running it all day long, it's not like we're going to need to...
If you're buying a charging station, though, the cost difference between a one-ten and a two-twenty charging unit themselves is not much.
Right. I just bought one for my personal vehicle. It was about fifteen hundred to get it in and everything.
Right. I mean, if, if the wiring's already there, it's about a thousand dollar thing. It's...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that. I just think that, me personally, I think this is a great way for us to be able to show our commitment to going the electric vehicle route while not having to break the bank on getting infrastructure put in place to be able to support it.
So sixty-five out of current budget and thirty-five out of the twenty-twenty-three budget?
Well, it sounds like it'd be seventy-three out of...
What, what do we need to pay this year to get the van now?
If you want, do you want the electric, to pursue the electric van?
Yes.
Yes, so seventy-two, was that what we just came up with? Seventy-three, seventy-three thousand.
So sixty for the actual van, and then the wrap was...
Up to seven for the wrap. And then the nice thing is, is this is a physical purchase. We can actually, we don't have to transfer those funds. You can actually pay for it out of here. That's a purchase that can come out because it'll be a lump sum. We don't have to pay salaries over a term. That's why we transfer the thirty-five. So yes, we could do the, the sixty thousand dollar electric vehicle, the vehicle wrap, and equipping it all out of this current twenty-two budget, and then allocate the, the existing thirty-five, continue on with that into the twenty-three forward. Is that correct?
The sixty thousand in would be sufficient because we'd have ninety-five thousand in the account, right?
Well, yeah. Yeah, we'd have money that's through the grants that are going to be running the actual program.
There's thirty-five thousand already in the count that hasn't been signed now.
Right.
Sixty on top of it for this year's allocation.
Yes, do you want the, the thirty-five if you want to, in this fiscal, so we're talking this fiscal year, correct?
Yeah.
Do you want the base thirty-five, or do you just want to do the seventy-three? Do you want to merge the two together so that this year's contribution pays for a van period? Are we talking thirty-five plus?
We, we were side-talking over here while you were talking, too. So my thought is, right now we have thirty-five in current year budget.
Correct.
We bump that to a hundred. And then next year's budget is thirty-five.
Okay, got it. Does that get you where you need to be?
Then that gets a van for this year and gets programming for next year, but also doesn't make it so that ongoing budgets look really bad.
Correct.
I will agree with that.
Okay. Consensus for that? Yes?
Which also still leaves us with money left over, though, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's still our credit over quite a bit.
The committee still needs to get together here to figure out what we want to do for the remainder of the, the funds that are in this year, the hundred and four less.
Yeah.
And then next year, so even you have the two hundred and thirty, well, you're still going to have a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars left to deal with of what do you want to do with that?
Okay.
So it still is leaving the flexibility of what kind of programming are we talking about? Where do you want to make a difference in those, what areas, what areas do we want to focus on?
Okay.
So it still leaves ultimate flexibility.
I mean, that would allow us to do programming around the new holiday, whatever, if we wanted, or...
Yeah, so this is community and, uh, Community Services, we named it that specifically for the reason. It's under Health and Human Services, but community events are human services, too. So you have ultimate flexibility. These are not federal dollars. We're not talking about anything in, that's restricted. This is your restriction. What do you want to do with it?
It's flush funds.
No, no.
No, but it is as close as we have in the budget to, you get to do what you want to do with that that's meeting the goals that you want to do with this program. It's a blank slate. It really is.
So how much, when we give, we get the van and the toys and all of that fun stuff, how much is left out of this year's, of that hundred and four, if I'm reading it correctly?
Yeah.
Forty-ish?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the two thirty, seven fifty, that's what's left after we've paid?
We'll take thirty-five thousand out of that and move it down to the transfers line because if we want to continue to fund MAC for the fiscal twenty-three.
So we're at a little under two hundred, but, but we've already paid Ucan, Food Pantry, all of these other...
The other ones, yeah.
Those of, okay.
Yep, that's what's left.
Who sits on this committee again?
Who?
I do. I was wondering if I was so happy. I was curious.
You do, you and Adam and me.
Okay.
No.
Oh, wait.
You were hotel motel.
That was hotel motel. Oh, yeah, right.
We were Community Service. I was just making, I just didn't know who was in line anymore.
I think we did meet. We didn't do any...
Once in your abs, didn't you? Sorry.
And, and we kicked, kicked the can, I think.
But...
Well, that was COVID, it was COVID year, so I mean, it was, so what we did at the end of last fiscal year, because we couldn't spend it if we wanted to. There was no MAC, there was no ISU, all those extension things that you had planned for that. We actually transferred that into a project fund for Community Services so that you, we didn't lose it. Because this is a general fund department. These are lost dollars that we intended to be spent on this stuff. So we did transfer those. So you technically have a little bit more in there waiting for that because we didn't get all those ISU programs done either. Um, so we, we, we will catch it all up and get it all spent. It's available for use, yes, but the committee does have a good flexible dollar amount to work with.
We'll get that back together and...
Yes, yes.
Meet McDonald's.
Yeah.
One of the things we talked about while you were gone was that would we use these dollars to do a space study for Ucan and Food Pantry, asking their boards to come back to us? And it's been crickets, so...
That's what I've been wondering, too.
Seventy-five thousand dollars for, um, real estate assistance, I believe is the, yes. And that was part of the money that was transferred over, sitting in, in a project fund waiting for that.
So, so we asked them to come back to us and...
Not lost.
That's still there.
Yes.
Food pantry has worked on their own issues and...
That was from year one of the budget.
The rental assistance or however we plan.
The twenty-one budget is the one that we didn't get to spend.
All right. That'll be an interesting one. We finally meet and discuss that.
Yep. Would this be a time to talk about the Civil Rights Commission?
Sure.
Yeah.
This is in that department.
This is your, yeah.
Okay. Um, I have not served on the, on the Civil Rights Commission, like my friends here on my right. I would like to see us do more with our Civil Rights Commission. Um, I don't know what that means, but I would like it to be more, make a more meaningful and active contribution to our community. And, um, I don't know what that, what that means, if it means we need to dedicate, at this point, dedicate some more money to it. But I think this is a timely place to talk about this and to figure out a way to make it, um, a more meaningful, um, organization in our community. And I hate to put you guys over there on the spot, but I would look to you to maybe jump in and offer anything.
Well, I can say that I had actually brought that up with the Civil Rights Commission, uh, while I was on there, and I was met with a lot of resistance. Uh, I'd even brought up even if they could serve as an intermediary between the city and our city staff. And doesn't even necessarily have to be in particular one, one department. So that way they felt comfortable having a, a, a body of people that aren't made up of city officials or body of people that aren't made up of city officials or anything like that. And I was told that that was outside of the realm of what that current body was willing to do. So, I think that I am one-hundred percent all for it because I wouldn't have suggested it if I wasn't. I just think that, I don't know, I don't know what that would entail as far as the folks who are currently serving and what we would have to do with that.
That's what I was gonna follow up. First, I, I, I think I like the idea of doing more, but ultimately is upon the commission itself to want to do this. I don't think we should force anything on that commission saying like, we expect this, you to do more, here's some more money and do what we demand. I will say, I went to their presentation yesterday at the Urbandale Library, and if anybody's walked through that, it's a wonderful presentation. So, I think they're trying to innovate. And I think that it's something, and that to me is a wonderful way that they, that has never been done in the years I've been here. And I think that's something that I would see if they want to bring funding forward. Again, the biggest issue with the Civil Rights Commission versus other ones in other communities is that the big issue with Civil Rights Commissions in other communities is that they review civil rights violations and, but, and then do the review of it for the city.
Right.
Yeah. That, but ours outsources it and I'm not saying goodbye or otherwise to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission. So, they do, we don't review our own. And that's the biggest function of why that exists because that's why Iowa Code after a certain, after.
Twenty-nine thousand.
What?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand. Once we reach a certain size, that's when the Civil Rights Commission exists. And then that's, and then they can choose to decide whether to do it one way or the other.
But we still have to have it?
We still have to have it.
We outsource it?
That we were mandated to do it. Iowa Code is like Matt said, that after you reach population of twenty-nine thousand, you're mandated to have a Civil Rights Commission.
Yeah. So, again, I'm not against the idea of expanding. I don't, I'm not against them.
I feel like, given what I believe is our desire to be more a more just and sustainable community, the Civil Rights Commission seems to be a way to funnel some of that activity that.
I just make a couple of comments. I understand. I appreciate that. Maybe what, two things we can maybe do is have a lunch and learn. I don't recall in ever my years that we've had a, had a joint meeting of the Civil Rights Commission and the City Council, so we can do that. Secondly, you have to also acknowledge that, you know, the staffing on that, you know, John, I think John Staff said, doesn't he?
Yes.
So, you know, you're, you've got certain fixed bandwidth of staff that currently, so we need to recognize that as well. But not saying we couldn't do more. And I always thought we probably could do more relatively easily and cost-effective. We used to have a diversity fair in Walker Johnston years ago, and that kind of went by the wayside. I would think that's ripe for renewal with, with, you know, bringing the, all the different cultures that we have in Urbandale. That's a fairly low cost and low structured type of thing. I mean, that's just one example of things that we could do is have, have an event like that in the summertime where you have different food tents of different, of different cultures and that type of thing. I mean, I think it used to be a great event, as I recall, and I, do you remember that, Molly? That's been at least ten, twelve years ago. So, anyway.
And I guess, Bridget, help me understand scope. I mean, are you thinking this is a, doing a, a couple of fairs, a two-thousand-dollar type thing, or is this a really change it?
I guess I don't know. I mean, this is very educational to me to hear about this. I think that's a fantastic idea for, especially for our desire to see us do more activities. And, you know, like, the, I had every intention of getting to some of these functions at the library this last week with the events that they were holding. But, you know, coordinating, you know, events at the library, making sure that we're doing, you know, the different, celebrating the different history months. And I mean, the library seems very ready and willing and able and just having, you know, the Civil Rights Commission there to, to support, sponsor, publicize. I mean, I don't know. Does that answer your question? I mean, I, or, you know, we have a annual, you know, speaker or something. I, I, I guess I don't, I just feel like we can do more. I don't, you know, we don't need to have meetings of this group just to have meetings, but more of.
I guess from that perspective, when I think about like a celebration or whatever, I mean, that really gets to perfunctory, like we're putting on a display. I would be more interested in seeing how do we dig into policies and if we're gonna do it, like where do we start to get actual real change? Which isn't going to be from a public display. It's gonna be from digging into things and making sure that we're equitable across our policies. I think we are, but it would be interesting to have some forums with folks to say, how are you perceiving this? Do people even know we have a commission? Do we have reports to the commission? You know, is there more that we should be digging into? I don't know the answer to that.
But I do want to say, just reiterate this point, we are, we, this is a commission that has, is, I don't want to tell them what they should be doing and then resist them wanting to do. I feel that we need to bring them in to have their consent before we do it. And if they want to expand, happy to give them ten thousand more or whatever it takes to make that happen. But I, I really want to make sure before we even put any money towards it, that they are willing and able to do these things before we, we foist. And I hate using that word, but I'm just, I'm just cognizant of these citizens that are serving on this.
It has to happen organically.
Absolutely.
We can't, there can't be a top-down approach.
It's gonna be interesting to know, you know, why did they join the commission? I mean, I know I reached out to Michael Sadler years ago and, and he said, you don't want to join this one. It doesn't do anything. And so, that was a red flag for me. You know, Larry had a similar experience.
Yeah, there, I'll be completely honest and maybe part of that was due to COVID, but, you know, in my two years, I think two years that I was on there, I think we met maybe three times and most of it was to try to prop up something to do like what they're doing at the library right now, which is great. It's moving in a direction forward, which is, you know, it's accomplishing something. When I looked at communities around us like West Des Moines, in Des Moines and, you know, all, all the surrounding areas and saw their Civil Rights Commissions and everything that they were responsible for, I felt like that's what I was getting myself into as opposed to what we actually have. But again, that's, that's what we put in place. That's what the people have signed up for. They, they knew a lot more about it than I did getting into it. So, yeah, to the mayor's point, I do, I do think that we have to, we have to work with them to find what it is they want to do within the Civil Rights Commission and go from there.
And I will say this, this is discretionary funding that we have a committee that will, we can work to move forward. So, we can have this discussion and we can allocate this funding at a later time. We don't have to tonight. So, but I think this, I think this is a ripe opportunity to have this discussion, but but when it comes to the money piece, we can do that at a later time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
I, I, that's fine. I mean, I wasn't advocating for a specific dollar amount, just wanted to have this conversation because I know you guys are, have good experience with it. I know, I think Amy has a lot to add. I probably don't, but that doesn't stop me.
No, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, again, I think, I mean, we need to, as I said, it needs to be organic though. So, we can certainly have some discussion and dialogue, but want to make sure that the commission is the one that.
But if, if we don't have any expectations on the, I mean, I understand what you're saying and I, and I don't want to dictate to them, but if they've never known anything different other than three meetings over two years where they say they want to support the library having a program and that's the end of what they do. I mean, to me, that seems kind of pointless.
I think it'd just be as simple as, look, we're willing to fund some projects. What would you bring forward? I think it can be just as simple as that to them. And now it is organic from them of, hey, we know resources are available now. What, what does it look like to move forward? And they may come back with, you know what? Five hundred bucks gets us this and we're happy with that. Or they may come back with a plan that nobody wants to fund. Who knows?
A van.
An electric van that goes all around Urbandale, maybe? But no, more to Amy's point as well. I, I do think that we need to get the, the involvement of the community as whole because from looking at our, our council right now, it's very easy for us to say what we'd like, but I think, you know, from folks like my wife, who is, doesn't look like any one of us, she may have a completely different idea of what the Civil Rights Commission should be doing. And I think that's where we need to go out to the community to find out where do we need to help hopefully guide them towards.
So, to be determined.
Yes.
Or to be continued.
Yes.
And determined.
And determined, yeah.
All right. Where does that leave us here?
So, I guess, does that leave us with about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar number that we need to deal with later?
Yep.
Okay.
We need to deal with that by June thirtieth or?
So, that would be.
By June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
The current year, you're left with thirty-nine thousand, three hundred in the current budget that we need to determine what you would like to do with. And then for the budget that we're setting for twenty-three, that, you can start meeting on that at any time. You could kind of address that together, figure out what you've got left this year that you could go ahead and knock out and then get a plan for next year. It has to be used by six-thirty of twenty-three.
And that number is the?
The two-thirty less than thirty-five thousand.
It has to be used or committed because kind of like
Correct.
Twenty-twenty money.
Correct.
Is still sitting there waiting for as organizations to start playing well together.
Yes.
Or something to happen there. So, we could do the same with the thirty-nine is we could put it kind of in that same pot going.
Correct.
It's reserved. We're still waiting.
Right. So, the, the core difference from a mechanic's perspective, I can't transfer without a budget amendment. So, and if we, if you want to do that, I can transfer all of it out there so it, so that it sits in the project and we're spending it out of there. So, that's just a mechanics thing. It's available for use here, but if you don't spend it, when I do my amendment in the end of April, early May, we would budget to transfer it over and scooch it, which is what will happen this year too, if you don't spend the thirty-nine. Because we don't want those funds to roll back. That was not the intent of the lost funds. So, the lost money would be transferred. That's what we did the last year. And so, that's true. So, as the committee decides, what do you want to do? Yes, you've kind of got your own checkbook to deal with. It's not just this money. It's plus the stuff that I transferred at the end of last year too. So, fair point that, yes, it'll be there. You don't have to spend it, but if you don't, I need to transfer it. So, we just got to give me enough room. I need thirty days before the end of the fiscal year to get an amendment passed.
Because if we do end up being a landlord for outside agencies, we're talking a multimillion dollar project possibly.
Definitely.
And so, yes, it sounds like a lot that we've got that, you know, seventy-five grand from the year before, maybe forty grand from this year. That's still a drop in the bucket to the potential number that we could be looking at.
If you were intending to do a building for that, yes.
Yeah. So.
So, yeah, that's all to be determined. Ultimately, it's just, you have the flexibility to do what you need. And if at the end of the fiscal year, we're not quite ready to commit to that, I will amend and roll it down to a transfer.
Thank you.
Makes sense? Okay. So, I got that direction on that one. That was the last of our department departments. So, flip to internal, I'm sorry, special revenue funds. So, I'm missing S one and S two, but I believe that that's contingency in your books. Do you guys all have an SR one and two?
Yes.
Contingency. Okay. So, the contingency one is what is that first page? So, effectively, this is, and it's not surplus because it rolls back to budget in the general fund. But each function, so remember, we talked about each of these tabs as a function, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar contingency. So, that helps that, see, I only amend one time, but I legally cannot go over what I budget in that function before I amend with this date. So, this allows for a, wow, huge ice storm and I'm clear at the end of, of March and I'm gonna blow my budget. This gives me a little bit of cushion built in that I didn't have to amend. I could go ahead and spend. It has to come to council. So, we will, I will never spend these funds without having coming to council and say, I need you to authorize use of contingency. So, that's my policy. If we don't use it, which many years we have not, the most recent time we did it was to fund the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund that you authorized us to pull the full hundred thousand. We didn't have any.
For the COVID.
For the COVID relief fund.
Yeah, to pay that contribution in, that's, that's the special revenue fund that we moved it into. So, we've done it for that. And then the first, but the very first year of revolving loan fund, we used it to fund the base for that as well. So, we've used it twice related to that. And the, my very first year here in oh-six, we did it because the pumper truck was a lemon and we couldn't, like it had a forty-five thousand dollar something, something wrong with it. That's the only other time I recall ever spending it. So, those are, it's a hundred thousand dollars that's effectively cushioned in this year's budget to make sure that I, I could legally deal with an emergency without having to amend first. So, that's all that is. That's what contingency is. It's all general fund dollars and it rolls right back to general fund if we don't use it. So, it's not going into a rainy day fund. It doesn't sit separately. It's just a expenditure cushion.
As our budget grows, when does this need to grow?
I could do it at any time so far because we use it so infrequently. And if we needed to go above that, generally, I have time to amend. This is literally the coverage for the thirty days between the end of the year. So, I will, if I know something's coming, I amend, right? So, we do that in May. But between June first and June thirtieth, there's not a technical number of days that I can actually post an amendment and pass it because there's a appeal process, blah, blah, blah. You have to have your amendments done before the end of thirty days. If I had a hundred thou, more than a hundred thousand dollars expense in the last thirty days, we would hold it until July one. Is effectively what we would do. It's, it's just my safety net for thirty days.
Okay. It just, you know, obviously, as, as budgets grow, sometimes you see a percent of something being a contingency.
Yeah, and, and we could definitely look at that effectively because we know we're never gonna spend it. It just makes our estimates on our fund balance vary quite a bit because we say, oh, look, I'm gonna use an extra hundred thousand, but I never use it. So, if I have, ooh, I need to give myself a million dollar cushion. Well, I'm never gonna show the correct. It's, it's kind of a moody's.
Did we use it for the June thirty rainstorm?
Probably not.
Didn't we use it for the June thirty cleanup, June thirty of twenty-eighteen?
We had the rain and.
No, because all of that happened in the next, in the next fiscal year and I, so it was into the new budget.
July one.
And I was able to float that until our amendment.
But did, did we use it for that?
No, I just amended. No. So, it kind of all depends on the timing. It's literally for that thirty days of, I couldn't do anything about it. If we had a windstorm June first, I can't do anything about that mechanically in the budget. So, we would just.
We would have kicked that in.
Yes, we would have absorbed it for a month. Most of those bills wouldn't be till July. So, be fine anyway. But so that's what that contingency means. It's the same every year or has been since I've been here. So, the next one is our debt service fund. So, this is another special revenue fund, legal obligation that all debt service levy dollars come into this fund. And it's the only place that I can actually pay to service debt, no matter what kind of debt we issue. If it's general obligation, it has to be paid out of here. So, that's why the whole transfer game has to happen. So, TIF, the revenue dollars come in from TIF to pay for a general obligation bond, but I have to transfer it over here to pay it. So, that's why the expense number looks really weird and that's why we keep it out of all of our ratios when we do operating factors because this number can go way up or way down. Part of that process is calling and paying off all of the, with the local option sales tax dollars that we've been doing. At your spots, I, my pretty colored one that I, that I put on your stations. If you look over in the right corner, that's telling you all of those dollars that we've actually retired. So, the red one, the first year of local option sales tax retired a million nine-nine-five. Last fiscal year, I retired six-point-four million. This June first, I'll retire seven-point-nine-nine-five. And in the budget that I, we're setting tonight or working on tonight will be three-point-four million. So, there's only two years past that. So, we're super close to our long-term plan to get all existing debt paid off. So, we'll be down to only those debts that during this payoff process, we've issued in the meantime. So, that's why that number fluctuates a lot. So, the current year, our expenditures go up to fourteen million. But like twenty-three, I'm only paying off three-point-four million. So, it drops back down to ten million. So, there's a huge amount of variation in debt services, I guess, my point, based on what our call and payoff activity is. This is supported by a dollar forty-four levy. This was set in our CIP that you have already approved. That, that structure is what drives this number. So, based on the projects that I'm going to complete, based on that CIP document that derives back into a debt structure to support the dollar forty-four. So, we've gone down ten cents. Again, that's our hitting right at that, ten cents a year until we're down. I think our plateau is about a dollar five. And then we'll have to just service the rest of that debt and then be done. So, it's, it's kind of an interesting process to actually get to the point that we'll be cash flowing our capital projects, which is really significant. I mean, to really think about that. And this will, shows you all of the bonds and what that equals on a levy. If, it's just kind of an interesting, if you're a numbers person, to kind of see what that impact is. So, every year that we can pay off early, it's a cumulative amount and that's gone forever. So, it's unlike property tax relief has a lot of different meanings. But debt service is the most relatable, I think, to the public as well because you're talking about your property, like pay off your mortgage. It's gone forever.
Yep.
And I have the assets that we, that we built with that. So, instead of, I would like to fund police this year. Okay, that would cost you, you know, two dollars on your levy. But I also need that two dollars next year. It didn't go away, right? So, versus this is, the debt's gone forever and that's a. It didn't go away, right? So versus this is, the debt's gone forever and that's a cumulative effect. So that's how that ten cents reduction, 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 and that's a permanent reduction. I don't have to re-buy it every year, if that makes sense. So it's conceptually the easiest to grasp because everybody or most people that are paying taxes have a house and have a mortgage.
If you don't have that interest cost, you can plow that interest cost into something else.
Correct, correct. Because we used to call and just refinance, you know, when the rates were really good, we would call and refinance debt. Now we just call and pay it off. That's the, the lost has been a game changer for that perspective. And effectively, we're using a hundred percent of lost for property tax reduction by doing this. Because I'm using those dollars here that frees up that money for additional capacity in other areas. So it, it's a shell game, if you want to call it that, but the bucket legally has only, has restrictions on it. And this satisfies that. So I can do things with our regular property tax dollars that are operational. Because you don't want to do, lost is a one-time fund. If we have a terrible year or Amazon goes away, for some reason, we all stop buying things online. Those lost dollars can be hugely variable. So if you buy people with that, you say, I want to add three new firefighters for that. What happens when lost has a bad year? You're going to fire those people? I mean, that's, that's the operational versus not. If it's an operational program that you guys want to fund, a hundred percent, that should be covered by our general operating levy. We should be supporting levy dollars to support that. These are one-time dollars, so we're using it for one time. Get rid of it. Done. So that's the whole methodology. And I so appreciate that you guys are willing to support that process to get through it because we will be cash flowing our CIP. That's really awesome. I'm in an enviable position as a finance director of my other metro communities that not even close to that. So it's really awesome what we're doing here and very, I feel very responsible with the dollars that we are given. That was a game changer. The other piece that I wanted to show you related to that, this is just kind of the little why it's important that we continue to pay off debt. So the short one here, this is the table that's in our current audit. So any of you that are on audit committee, you recognize this top section. Ten years worth of what our outstanding debt is. And this is all about debt limit. So you all know about the statutory debt limit. You've heard me talk about that, AJ talk about that. It's five percent of your total assessed value and it's assessed value, not taxable value. So the top chart is there, but the stuff in the box is what I want to call out for you. So if you look at what our twenty-two, just to kind of walk you through it, so the, we have the columns there for where, where we were at. The current total assessed value at five point eight million for the current fiscal year or five point eight billion, sorry. So our five percent of that is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety million. Sorry, I'm really off a decimal point there. So the things that are legally obligated to calculate against us, so our, our five percent calculation, you have to take in all the TIF rebates that I have, development agreements out there and outstanding, as well as actual bonds that we have sitting outstanding. So we have seventy-three point nine million dollars in bonds, nine point four in rebates yet to be paid. So that leaves us with eighty-three point three, calculates down. So we technically have two hundred and seven million dollars in available capacity for debt. Seems like a big number. It is. However, start backing off our fiscal performance goals. This little sheet is all the fiscal performance goals that are, have been outlined and in place well before I got here as well. This was one of the first things we did. Thirty percent of our, the, the policy says we will hold back thirty percent for a, oh, my goodness moment. A COVID, a whatever that we would have to deal with, thirty percent, take that off. So there's eighty-seven million that we hold back. So that leaves us with a hundred and twenty million dollars. Still a big number. But then scooch over a column, the twenty-three, what happens when we start to, we're going to issue money for the Bucks Arena at Merle Hay Mall? Twenty-three and a half is what I threw in there. It'll be somewhere between twenty and twenty-six is what our maximum was. And depending upon what happens with the rec complex, it may not be in twenty-three, it could be in twenty-four, wherever we issue that. But I want to drive down to the number of what percentage we're using of our capacity. So if we add on those two bonds in the same year, you're talking about almost doubling our debt profile, which is significant. So that's why I'm trying to push to make sure that we're continuing to retire this debt. Because if I can call and pay off bonds as fast as I'm adding new ones, or at least minimize the effect of adding sixty million dollars in the same year when I only have seventy-four outstanding. We just want to try to not give Moody's a heart attack when we come through with our debt profile. That that ratio is going to really change for us. So we want to be methodical and show them our plan and they have loved what we're doing with this. So that's, I just wanted to visual show you what that, what that is and why I'm super conservative by nature, as AJ can attest. There's a reason we're trying to approach it this way and getting to that stage of, of methodically retiring our debt so that we have ultimate flexibility to do these awesome things. So that's what this page is about. And this is just for your FYI that was related to the debt, to see what our percentages have been trending. You know, I like numbers, so that's what that is. Okay, so I think we've pretty much beat to death debt. Any questions about that section? I know it's a lot. No? Glazed over. We're in the, now we're in.
I don't know, but you seem extremely happy about it. So it must be a good thing.
If I could chime in, it's, one of the things we, we spent a lot of time talking about this, Nikki and I. And we looked at how it positions the city for so many different things. Is that if you don't issue debt and you pay for projects as you go with cash, the cost of the projects, as the mayor mentioned, you have automatically more money to spend on that project or for more projects because you're not, you don't have any interest charges. And then you also have more flexibility on what you want to do with that money. And it, it just, it positions the city in so many different ways for the core things that you do that you will always do. You know, you always have a responsibility as a city to provide infrastructure for your community, particularly as you grow, repair, replace, address issues that come up that, that councils, current and future feel have value for our city. And I, and it just positions you as a council, current and future, and future councils, that you are given a great deal of flexibility that if you ever had to go to the market again, it, it might not be as a severe as positioned. And I'm saying that's severe. This is, this is a very manageable portfolio of debt. You know, we have a very aggressive process of when we borrow, we pay it off in a very quick fashion. And that's one of the things that we look at. It has, you know, it's, it's behind the scenes and it's, it's not as visible to the community. But it really does, from a financial responsibility standpoint, it really positions us well to those people that we would have to go to borrow money from, Moody's in particular. They're the ones who essentially say, you're a credit-worthy community. And for us, we're an investment-grade community. That means that people can buy our debt when we offer it and have a great assurance that it's going to be paid back. And it's, it's a good investment for the investors. So that's the financial side and it really does. It just, it has so many ripple effects on the whole group. It just, it has, it just, it just makes sense. You already have debt that, that the city has incurred to build roads five years ago or sewers five years ago or whatever it is we did with it five, ten years ago. So it just, it's an obligation that's sitting there looking at you right now. And so, you know, it, for us, it was an easy one because again, it's more of a, it's a solid financial. And when you have a solid financial, then everything else seems a lot easier to do, quite honestly.
Can we talk about fund balance a minute?
As a, the percentage, yeah.
So, I mean, I always look at that, Nikki, I always, I understand that, I think you brought it up Saturdays. That's probably a little inflated now because of the ARPA.
Yeah, effectively, the million dollars from the, it's not, ARPA is not, it's CARES money. So, so it went up. So this, I think, was in your packet from Saturday, the ones that, with all the fund balances.
I mean, I think if, if anything, we could get criticism on from Tax Fivers Association or anything else is having a, just a little heavy of a fund balance.
We are not nearly as high as our metro counterparts remarkably.
Are you kidding?
There's almost seventy percent there for a while.
Are you kidding?
Who? Clive.
They have a seventy percent fund balance?
Not right now, but they were, they're in mid-sixties. Ankeny is also, was higher than us. Now they've lowered their levy. So I think that they're trying to deal with some of that as well. And so you'll see, we are pulling it back down, obviously, u-using another seven hundred and ninety thousand for next year. So it'll drop down to forty-one. But yes, we are still in the forties and twenty-five is our floor.
I was just.
Just put numbers behind it for me, Nikki. If we were at twenty-five percent, what's, what's our gap right now above twenty-five percent? How many?
Six point seven million is what our twenty-five, so at the bottom of that little chart? Oh, not that one. I, you can't see me over the monitors. The Saturday one that's all the fund balances across, I'm, I'm sorry. So I calculate that for you because that's always something that Councilmember Russell always asks me for is what does twenty-five percent represent? So if you were, so the point behind the twenty-five percent, just from a logical perspective, that is GFOA best practice to have twenty-five percent. And the timing is based on timing. So I only collect property taxes twice a year, right? So this new budget, I would need twenty-five percent on hand at the beginning of the year because in theory, I don't get paid property tax-driven until October eleventh, technically. So I need a quarter of the year to fund the city. So if you actually look at that balance at general fund, so this is coming into the year at sixteen million. By the time I get my property taxes, we're generally under two million dollars. So there's a huge swing for sure. So that's just something to keep in mind. That's why the twenty-five percent is there. Forty is way higher than, than twenty-five percent. That just becomes a comfort level with you guys of how, how aggressive do you want to be with that?
And I don't, I'm not advocating for getting down all the way to twenty-five. I think, but I think, I think once it's consistently over forty percent, that's when I start looking at is like, can we burn some of that and lower the levy rate by another penny or two or whatever?
That, that is an available option. We've held it there because of backfill. And we've been at that thirty-seven to thirty-nine percent pretty consistently for the last several years because they keep toying with it, saying, we're going to take that back. Well, now we actually know and it's coming down. So now we're doing the, over four years, taking that backfill down, which is, this is the first year of that. So then we get past our twenty-seventh pay as well. That was an impact on this year's.
I brought that up during talk with officials on Saturday too, by the way.
Did anybody want, have a?
Just noting that for the record on our budget, you know, the, the impact of our budget was the elimination of the backfill.
Yes, yes.
I brought that up with our legislators, let's put that way.
Yes, they will do that. The other interesting one on the legislature, we were just talking about that today is there is an a bill related to taking back our local option sales tax and making it a statewide tax and then they'll allocate it back to us. So conveniently, they may figure, refer to backfill if they promise that would be forever too and, you know. So we are pretty conservative in our nature. If that would move forward, that would be significant. We're so close to getting lost dollars to do that. I would hope that we can continue on with that, but that would be significant.
Isn't there a logic with that is it gets rid of the lost fund, it raises everybody a sales tax penny? And then we would collect, and I'm not advocating, this is just a logic I heard. Is that cities like Ankeny would have to then pay in and in theory, we would get more back.
We, we would lose based on, yes, unless the, the formula changes, we would lose. So it's less, I think that West Moyn did a spreadsheet of it, we would lose about four hundred and sixty thousand a year.
Right, about thirty percent.
Yeah. So, so we'd have about a thirty percent reduction on ours. So we, we're a, we're a net importer. We're, we're using base from others because of that formula. West Moyn is the biggest impact of that, especially in Dallas County because it's based on nineteen eighty-three. Okay, so that's a long time ago. The half of the formula is based on valuations in that county at that time. And the other part is census now. So it's, it's a mixed formula. They have been requesting that revision for a long time. I mean, there's millions of dollars impact that they're losing on the Dallas County because their population was hardly anything in Dallas County. And now they have a mall there. So.
And I will say that if there's a positive light for that, of the three tax bills, only one of the three has that and that's the Senate version.
Correct, yeah. And the governors didn't have it.
Governor do not, so.
So we're hopeful that it's maybe not going to go anywhere, but that, that would be our concern. Yes, everyone would pay the same because I, I understand the, you know, across the street, I'm not paying the seven percent, but this side of the street I am. Hundred percent understand that. It's just the vulnerability of conveniently, you forgot that we passed that referendum in our community and now you're taking that away if they decide not to continue to allocate it. A backfill situation, a machinery tax back from.
Years ago, I mean, it, it does.
It happens.
It does happen. And it's really one of those things that you hate to be
We're pessimistic. It's okay. We're pessimistic.
But at the same time, as we talked this afternoon, I was on the West Pet Conversation, I said I was going to have, and I can give you an update on that. But we, the three of us, the city of Clive and, and West Moyn and I, we talked about that and we talked about it in general. Is that each of the communities, as they move forward with local option sales tax, they presented it to their citizens in a variety of forms, whatever, whatever reason they wanted to present to get it passed. And the last one, you had to have fifty percent property tax relief, but things for other things that they wanted to do for their community. And so there was energy and effort expended to do that. And then the state would come in and say, well, we're going to go ahead and incorporate that statewide, much like they do with the school districts. And that we're going to make distribution and theoretically, part of it is for those of the, the areas that don't have a large retail or local option sales, sales tax base and they contribute to ours or Ankeny's or, or Iowa City's or Cedar Rapids or whatever, there, there's that philosophical argument. But it's just that the three of us have been around long enough that we said, we just sense we can get burned in this. And that's one of the things that it's happened too many different times where we went through the effort, meaning cities, to get it passed, put our reputations as a city and, and saying that we're going to do this for you residents. And then all of a sudden, we lose control of it. And that's part of my, you know, control thought process about, it was for us. You guys are taking it over. But again.
And I would say, school district, when the state took it over, the urban districts lost and the rural districts gained. So back to that, what's the biggest divide at the state house, urban, rural? And I would assume the formula is similar here where urban loses rural gains.
That's correct. Yes. The other piece of that would be franchise fees too, because the reason Ankeny didn't pass it is they make more in fran, you can't have both franchise fee or lost. And so they opted to keep franchise and not lost. So that would be something, and I have not looked at what they're proposing in that area. I have no idea. If they would let them both have it, you can guarantee that the cities are going to come back and say, well, I guess we're going to need to have a franchise fee because you just took away our lost and now those that already had it are double dipping on that. So it would be very interesting to see what that, how that would come to fruition. But yes, we would lose, not nearly as much as some, but yeah, it is a rural, urban thing because of the formula. If the formula changes, it could be a game changer again.
Can I go back to Bob's question though on fund balance?
Yes.
So what would it look like if we did drop the levy rate by a nickel? Would that be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar drop to the fund balance?
That's about thirty-six, thirty-six thousand dollars per cent.
So that the whole ten cent would go through. And then the other question is, I know we got an extra payroll this year, which is basically what we're dropping the fund balance by.
Correct.
So does that mean the twenty-four year, we have twenty-five payrolls instead of twenty?
Twenty-six, always.
So did we have twenty-five this past year?
Nope. It's just a cash flow thing. So it's based on the first Friday being a payroll.
But over a two-year cycle, wouldn't we have fifty-two payrolls?
Wouldn't, wouldn't, nope. It's always twenty-six. It never goes down to twenty-five. It only goes up because if the first Friday, July first is a Friday payday, then it's a twenty-seven pay, it happens every twelfth year.
And even though that, that pay period didn't fall in the last fiscal year, it's still, you still had twenty-six that last one. It's just weird. Yeah, it's weird.
So we don't have that savings in twenty-four year, but, but if we were to go thirty-six times a nickel, I guess, is a hundred and sixty-ish, a hundred and seventy-ish thousand dollar fund balance hit if we were to drop. Keep that, like, have a ten cent total reduction across the board. Right now, we're a five cent reduction, right? So if we went to a ten cent, then we'd about.
Correct, but not on general levy. So it depends upon where you want it. So general is only general levy. So we're talking about the eight-ten. So the ten cent reduction is on debt service. So you, you have that piece of it. Five cents is going up on the four-eleven.
So you'd either have to pay more of four-eleven from general or more of employee benefits from general to get that.
Correct. You could shift it off of the other one, but that's going to shift it back to general. So the only one you could, you could relieve it more on the four-eleven levy and take that one up. That is direct relief to general fund. But that's going to grow your, your fund balance even more. So you. So, you're wanting to actually reduce your revenue and use more.
If we reduce 411 by a nickel and pull more from the general fund to cover 411?
Right, if you're switching back. I'm sorry, I thought you said increase.
No, so reduce 411 by a nickel, pull more of 411 from general fund.
Just keep it static, we are increasing it by a cent, so.
Right, or keep it static.
Yes, you could.
Keep it at 37 cents.
And pay more of the what's needed for 411 from the general, that'd be about 160-ish thousand dollar hit.
Yes.
The levy or to the fund balance, okay.
The only reason we're, we're increasing is to get back to full funding. So, that was our intent, but yes, it would just delay it a year.
Okay.
Because the 411 pension rate did go down, so that was a great savings because we were four years out from having to get it fully funded again. But, so yes, that is an available option for you.
And I know you don't want to whipsaw, but if we, you know, I don't know how far out your spreadsheets go, but.
Seven years.
Okay. So, if you're looking at the next year, are you kind of also projecting a potential drop then as well or?
I, I think we probably will be ready to do a drop next year. If valuations come in again above 4%, because, so we build it on three, anything above that is gravy, right? So, as long as we're continuing on with the debt service side, we can start to make some movement on the other piece. We were waiting on, make sure now we know what backfill is going to happen. I'd like to make sure that this loss thing goes away. But yes, there's, I would assume that we're going to have a reduction or at least stabilize. We shouldn't have to increase 411 anymore. We're going to, based on this, in 24, I'm using lost dollars to buy down the rest of that debt or the pension cost. And then the employee benefits levy is already only at 10 cents. We could eliminate the employee benefits levy is what could happen from that too. Versus the 810. So, the 810, the reason that we do try to preserve the 810 is because there's so many other things that are reliant on that. I can't access any other employee benefits until I'm at 810.
Yep.
So, I'd rather take it off the other ones, I guess is the point. The 411 has council direction up until this point. When we first started that was, that's a state derived cost and I have no choice but to pay that. So, it has a dedicated levy that we can justify doing that. The employee benefits is what I would wipe out first, is what I would, would say to preserve 810. If we legitimately don't need the 411 and we don't want to have that carved out, it can roll back to general fund. It paid it up until 20, when did we start that, 2014?
14, yep.
14, 15? I can't remember what year we started that, but it's always been paid by general fund until this point. It's the 810 that I would like to hold on to as long as I can. Because that protects us and it gives you more availability because I have an automatic, the emergency levy is the first one you go to. It's an additional 27 cents. It says emergency, but it effectively means I'm at 810 and I need more money. That's what that's for. But if we're not and we've never been at 810 up until that point, so we've never been able to tap into those other levies. That's my main concern.
Okay. So, if we were to drop, I guess in this case, other employee benefits from 10 cents and a nickel is how we would functionally reduce the general fund levy by, or the general fund balance, I should say.
Correct. I'd rather take, if you're going to adjust it, I would rather take it off 411 because employee benefits buys down the per employee cost for all, all funds that have departments versus 411 is 100% general fund. You're not going to have the same bang for your buck because some of that is road use, some of it is stormwater, some of it is building and fleet, I guess. So, I've got four, four sources for employee benefits because there's employees in all of those funds. Does that make sense? But employee, if you want general fund reduction, it needs to come out of 411 first.
So, just calculating, even if we did that, it'd only reduce the fund balance by about a percent. It would still be about 41% from what I'm calculating.
It's not, not super significant, correct.
I'd like to do that, so. It's just, yeah, so I think it would give us still, keep us with a lot of flexibility and we're still at 40% fund balance at that point. And it may not allow 24 budget year to reduce. So, we may have to stay flat for a year instead of stair stepping down, stair stepping down, but that's a direct savings across the city for everybody.
I'd like to send that message to you.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that one.
I'd like to, I'd like to do that.
Can someone translate that conversation in English for me?
So, instead of a nickel?
No, I, I want Nikki to say what that means.
So, effectively, we would go down the full 10 cents on the debt service levy and there would be no offsetting 5 cent on the 411. So, we would have a total debt service go, we're at $10.11 today, we were going to go to 1006. It would instead go to 1001, our total levy.
So, we're.
Where are we, what are we cutting to get to 1001?
We're not going to cut anything. All we're using is part of our savings.
We're just reducing the levy. So, it reduces the amount of revenue I'm going to bring in on the property tax dollars. So, by having less, it's going to use fund balance to pay for that. So, there's nothing cut.
Our savings account by 160, 170,000 dollars.
Our.
How does that impact us next year, the year after, et cetera?
It would, I mean, effectively, just what Adam said is next year, I probably would need to at best stay stagnant. But I, debt service is on its own, own path, okay? So, that one is not going to be affected. Debt service is independent. So, you would, I would still look to use the loss to backfill the 411. We wouldn't be fully funded there. We'll lose ground on 411, but, I mean, there's no timeframe in which we have to do that. So, really, that's the only impact. It's still not going to affect general fund levy, that stays at 810. But we won't have full funding there unless you, right, depends upon what pension rates do, of course. I can't imagine it's going to keep going down, but maybe. Normally, it only shifts a percent or so, so it's a 23.9 for this fiscal year. If it goes up, that just puts us farther behind. Not hugely detrimental because it's all funded by general fund if there's not dollars there, so. So, no, it wouldn't have a huge impact. Right now, I do not, I'm only showing the 10 cent levy reduction on debt service for 24. There is no other recommended change at that time. So, that wouldn't change. It just may not allow us to potentially go ahead and drop next year if we do it this year. If valuations are strong again, though, that's always the caveat. If I'm, if I'm over 4%, we should be on track to drop a nickel next year as well.
We only need to look at our levy. It's only been, what, five years, four, five years ago that we had to raise it 50 cents, so.
Correct.
So, I mean, it, this is cyclical folks and we're going to, you know, we're at some point going to be probably in another recession and we're not going to be in a stronger financial position as we are. But I think it also sends a message that we are in a strong position, that we, we're prudent with taxpayer dollars too. I don't think it's overly, it's not jeopardizing our overall city budget. We're, it's.
Correct. It's not cutting anything that, that is presented before you. It would just reduce our revenue intake.
We're not cutting a single thing out of the budget. It's just that we're, as we said, we're just burning more of our savings account
Correct.
to the tune of about $160,000 and we still have 16,400,000 left in there.
We're adding residential and commercial properties, which we'll be collecting on next year as well.
About 18 month cycle.
Okay.
So, when you hear people complain about their assessments go up, we can say, well, in response to that, we reduced the levy by 10 cents. That's the other message you can send to your, your residents and your taxpayers is that we know, we benefited from that overall. And in response, the council was prudent and reduced the overall levy by 10 cents.
So, I guess, why didn't you do that to begin with? I guess, well, what's the case for doing it the way you had it to begin with, with how we have it now? Or you said it went down by 10 cents but up by 5 cents, right? So, effective 5 cents.
So, the 5 cent increase on the 411 levy rate was to get back to full funding of the entire city obligation for police and fire pension. So, we used to be fully funded and we shifted that off, but as we continue to add bodies, we're losing ground on even, it's effectively to relieve general fund. So, every dollar that I raise out of that levy is direct relief off of the general levy because it shifts those expenses to be paid here instead of paid out of general. So, moving towards council's discussion of always getting that back to funding, that's what we've been doing. So, we did it last year, raised it 5 cents, this year raised it 5 cents, but we're also, we've added six positions. The year we started pulling it in is when we added nine firefighters for the new station. I have no choice. We were going to lose ground significantly and all of that is absorbed then by general fund. So, that's the point is to just shift the burden from one levy to the other because I maxed out at 810 and, and can't continue to absorb.
Yeah, the 810 part, yeah, that one makes sense to me as far as why we did what we did with that.
Right. And so, we can't continue to absorb that full, we're eating more, by the levy not increasing on 411, more of that burden keeps shifting back to general fund and we're chewing through fund balance.
And you have less money to spend on other things other than pension.
Yeah, because everything paid by general fund has to be in that 810. So, it's effectively preserving what that 810 can support, what core operations. If I have another levy that can support a piece of it, that's why we start carving it out. And it's restricted legally that I can only use it for that, so that was why it was justifiable. So, there's no reason other than that the intent from council direction, obviously, half of the council is from when we did that. So, that's why it's a good discussion, is to get back to fully funding that obligation, that it's the state's obligation for us.
So, you're essentially what Mayor and Councilman Oberg are proposing are essentially paying for the 411 pension out of our own savings account and keeping the 411 levy where it's at right now.
Correct.
Even though, I mean, we, you said we had 100, or excuse me, you had $16 million in savings? Or that's rolling over essentially, that's, that's that general that rolls over, right?
Dollar, yeah, has about six.
Taking 1% of the savings account.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just taking a chunk out of it. We're not fully shifting it back by any means. But yes, it just is direct relief, one bucket or the other. This is the bucket game of, I'm not going to pay it in general fund. I'm going to pay it over here, but if I have less money in this bucket, it has to roll back here to pay for it. So, we're using savings. That's a good way to analyze it.
So, I will say, just as a devil's advocate for a little bit, we can say to our, the taxpayers that we are dropping levy 5, 5 cents already. So, we are being prudent and we are dropping. It, would we, would rather use some of this slight debt service lev, or a little bit of our savings to look at something on the, for example, on the CIP and just moving it up a year? Would we rather expend it on some type of project and just allow and keep, we're already dropping the levy, but just start moving that process a little bit faster on some projects that we deem more prudent to do a year before? Just throwing it out there to the council.
I don't think we have that opportunity, do we Nikki?
So, you're saying use general fund dollars to pay for a capital project to pull it out of the CIP? Because I still have to issue debt the way it's scheduled, so I can't pay general, use general fund to pay for a bond. So, it's something that's not bonded for, is what we're saying. Pick up something and take it and spend one-time money on that?
And we're talking $160,000, there's not a whole lot that we're going to.
I'm just throwing that out there, that's why.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that, so taking any of that fund balance to do something else besides leaving it in the bank account?
Ending it down on something else.
Okay, thank you.
I know there's some holiday lights that would like to be funded.
Well, I see your point is that instead of leaving it there, is there something collectively you guys want to do?
Something else.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, probably not CIP because that is relatively set, those are such small dollars. But if there's other areas that you want to, you know, you talked about, or somebody talked about trail maintenance, you know, some, do you want us to find something to spend more fund balance on? I'm sure my departments would love to say I have an open checkbook for that. But that's, I mean, that's the part of how, how it mechanically works through the system. You tell me where you want to focus those funds on and we can sure come up with more things to spend money on.
From a historical standpoint, go to, if I could ask you to just go to page six of your overview. Just to put it this all in perspective, what we're talking about, very top, the chart, this has the last seven or eight years of levies. With what we're talking about, this would bring us to 1001. You know, we've been at 1002 from 1718 to 1002, 1819, we went, we jumped to 1052, brought it back down 1016, 1011, 1006. So, I guess what I'm saying is, we have been, you know, before that, we were, obviously, you can see, we were consistently rising too, a dime, dime per year too. So, I, I think the times are good right now. We are in a very strong position. This, this is not going to happen forever. There are going to be years that you're going to have to raise the levy. But I just say, it's not a great impact on our budget and I think it sends a very strong message that you're being as prudent as possible and collecting as little additional tax from your taxpayers as is prudent. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
And in the interim, Matt can keep an eye on the last legislative action to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot that way.
I will say that there are certain lobbyists up there that need to be corrected with their approach to loss because, for example, there's a certain lobbyist that represents the MAC council who thought it was a good thing. And so, that, but this was right when it came out, so I think.
Robert?
No, the MAC, the MAC, or not, the big city one, Adelman.
Oh, Adelman, the, that Metro Coalition.
Yeah, Metro Coalition, sorry, that's what I meant. So, I think there needs to be, add some education from the city perspective related to that. But that's just a complete aside from this. Okay, I will say that, again, 160,000, it's tough to just randomly think up stuff. I, I guess I will, what to spend 160,000 on? And we already have community grant funds that could potentially go through to fund other, other things that we would want. So, I'd be supportive of doing a full 10 cents.
I think Larry already asked this and I, I don't feel like you really answered it. But why didn't you recommend that we lower it 5 cents to begin with? Or can we do 10 cents or 15 cents? I guess I, I'm feeling, everyone knows this is not my strong suit. I'll be upfront with that, but why, why are we, why did you guys not recommend that we lower it 5 more cents to begin with?
Greater number.
Right, so.
And why can't we go lower? I mean, why are we, why are we stopping at 160?
That is your prerogative, definitely.
You can go lower.
So, the 411 levy, my general marching orders is to get back to full funding there. So, if that is not your intent, we can adjust it however you so choose. It's providing general fund relief to make sure that we have a substantial, enough balance to keep it there. The only reason it went up is because of the CARES Act money, which is one-year money, right? So, that's not an ongoing. So, yes, the fund balance looks exceptionally high right now. But all of those new initiatives and hiring 12 positions, we automatically go down to, back down to the 41%, which is about where we've been, between 39 and 41. So, as your expenses grow, your percentage, so the 25% changes because your denominator is changing, right? So, we have more expense because we're adding more bodies and expanding everything about the city. So, my goal is to keep us right in that happy spot. If you want to bring it down, we can absolutely do that. It's just, once it's spent, it's spent. It doesn't come back unless you raise taxes again. So, we tried our best not to boomerang. We're still lowering, but I'm still fulfilling that this is a state obligation for the 411. My understanding is we wanted to get back there. If that is not the intent, just let me know. We don't have to do that.
So, that's why, that, again, Nikki's direction and AJ's direction is that they should be trying to fund that as much as possible based on what the expenses are. This is a policy decision and.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
And that's why, that's why I'm saying, I'm varying from what they're, they're very right to, to recommend this budget to us. But that's why we have to look critically at the numbers to decide from a policy standpoint, what's the best decision overall. And I, and my, my recommendation to reduce it by a nickel is to not, and I, I don't want to lower it so much to have that boomerang effect. That we, oh my God, we're in that, now we're way below and now we got to raise it. Because again, guys, I, as I said, I don't want to, but I've been through a lot of years and there's some very good years and there's some very bad years. And you're going to have some very bad years in the future, that you're going to have some very, very tough decisions to make on budgets. And so, I'm not trying to boomerang us either, but I'm trying to at least, while we have a very strong years, to send a message that we're sending a little bit more back to our residents, our taxpayers.
Our goal has been, and since we've been working together, is that level of consistency. Is that it may go like this, they level off, and it may go down. But again, to avoid those boomerangs because it's a feast or famine. And, and really, it, it pays havoc on operational. And then there is, we're cognizant of the political effect. People who call and say, gee, last year you went way up and this year you're going way down and then it's everywhere in between. So, I guess our collective experience is that when you have something that's steady or moves reasonably, you know, not too far up, not too far down, gives you at least a reasonable level of comfort. At least that's been our experience. And then again, there are things that, you know, the backfill, the adjustments of like five years ago and the, we don't have a lot of multifamily residential, but that's now starting to come down to the rollback level. The rollback alternates, again, just a bit different experiences that we have. And, and again, it gives, ultimately gives you the, as a council, the most flexibility as to what you want to do with the tax rate or you're, where you're going to spend those numbers.
The rollback is actually a really key point there too, is we don't control that either. So even in years when we go down, taxpayers pay more, really, because their rollback changes. So we're also lucky this year that it went down, well, the property taxpayer is going to feel lucky because it went down only to 54%. It was 56 the year before. So, but in the last, it was 54, 55, 55, 56, 56, 55, 55, 56. It's going to go back up, so that's a factor of something else we don't control. So that would, the political is way more on you guys as far as if we, if you drop it and then have to bring it back in a year that they also tax more, you're going to get blamed for them paying more taxes even if we lower. Does that make sense? Mechanically, they will pay more.
Well, that part definitely makes sense.
Yeah, and we did, I get called all the time about that, but.
It's just, it's just the nature of the beast as it goes, the items that are out of your control.
Yeah, so five cents, I don't think they're going to notice it that much. They're going to see a huge perk this year, but they will definitely pay more next year even if you stay stagnant.
So timing becomes the issue. I mean, if we stay at five, five cent reduction this year and then drop another five cents next year, it will basically offset any increases that may come down.
It could, it totally depends upon what, what happens. There's no guarantee in anything, I mean, that's, that's the, why I'm so conservative about that stuff. It's because I have so much boomerang effect just from property tax rollback that I can't control at all.
And 411 too, I mean, we don't.
Yeah, I mean, all of those things factor in.
411, there's no ceiling, I mean, I get it.
A 10 or a 15 cent drop, you, I can guarantee we're going to have to go back up next year.
We did that once, we went down.
We did that once, there was one year that was like, we definitely have to have an increase and said, okay, but I'm taking it right back next year. And we had to, so that's, that's the effect. Five cents, I don't think we would have that effect. 10 or 15, oh yes, I will have to take it back, we can't absorb that.
I think it sends a mixed message, I'd rather have that consistency across the board so you don't have that wild fluctuation that raises eyebrows.
And we want to make sure that we were giving that, I have to give you a deduction. So we want to lower it, but if you want to lower it the full 10 cents instead of just the five, I think we can absorb that. But more than that, I would caution you against that, given where rollback is, it's not going to stay at 54 and guarantee it's not.
So if we see a, because you said the 411 was at 23%, right? Or 24%?
2309, or 2308.
2308, so if we see like a 3 or 4% jump, now you're saying that next year we would have to raise it no matter what?
If it jumped that much, oh my gosh, yes. Normally only, this is the biggest it's dropped, I was at 2518 and it dropped to 238. It's usually a percent, percent and a half at best.
So if it goes even up by a percent, we're going to see that five cents come back next year?
100%, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want me to continue to move towards fully funding.
Right.
If you don't want me to do that, it can just continue to be where it's at and we bring in what revenue we've got from that levy and it is what it is, general fund picks up the difference. So that's, that's a policy guidance that I would like to have if you don't really care about getting back to that. Because that's what shifted my lost use too, is because I assumed we wanted to get that lost use to buy down our employee benefits levy. But in one year, I can get lost monies to catch up 411 to full funding. If we're not that concerned about that, we don't have to do that. That's in '24, so it's not the year we're talking about. But that was my policy discussion is, we need to get back to full funding, so that's why we've been pursuing it that way.
And I guess for me, it's, the mechanics between general, the 411 and employee benefits, to me is on you versus us.
Yes, it is.
Of which one do we take the nickel from and how does that balance, I'm not as concerned with. It's, the overall levy is more what I'm concerned with. Because the taxpayer does not care in the end where their money, you know, how much are they paying? Yes, am I getting good service for it? Yes, that's what they care about.
They have no idea how all that mechanics works.
Right, the internal between those three levies is not something that we're ever going to debate outside this room.
But if property values decrease and, you know, all these extraneous circumstances pop up, now all of a sudden Nikki's saying, well, we don't have a choice.
Right, no, and we don't have a choice.
We would have continued on course of where we're at right now with what she's doing. And which kind of goes back to why I was asking earlier, you know, why is it that you did it the way that you did it? And it makes sense to me, the reason why you're doing it. And it's to prevent, you know, any of these outside circumstances from occurring that could rock the boat to where now she does have to start pulling these levers. So to me, I, I, I get why you're doing it the way that you're doing it. At least, you know, I, I could probably sit down with you for a full week and have a discussion about this and probably still not fully understand it, but I, I, that's just me personally. But I, I personally feel like with the way you're going right now, that makes the most sense. And I understand, yeah, kicking it back to the taxpayer and saying, you know, we're, we're giving you something back and I, I think that would be awesome. I just, if it deviates too far away from what we originally set Nikki had to do, then I don't personally want to do it.
And again, it's, it's, you know, it's, again, we, I, I, Larry, I think we're going to, there are years you're going to have to raise it again. You know, I can think back to the great, you know, the 2007, 2008 where we, you know, I can't remember what those levy increases were then, but they were horrible budget years then. You know, we're, we're bringing back the levy to the pre-1718 levels and it's going to go up again at some point. But I think it also says that you are taking the lost money that you've been collecting over the past few years and we're showing real, we're demonstrating that we are applying that properly and, and getting real reductions and real savings to our taxpayers. We're providing first-class, world-class services at a very competitive cost. You know, there are countervailing policies on this, I'm not going to die on my sword on this thing. I just think it's, I've always looked at that fund balance and, and it's not going to, 160,000 is not going to deviate it from that much, but does the five cents, I think, is a message, especially when we're dealing with the legislature and they're seeing how we apply, when we're talking about the fact they may go to a statewide lost, everything else, how are we applying these funds? I think it does send a real message that we are being prudent with our tax dollars. And that's, that's where all I am is on.
And I've seen others have a crystal ball of what's next year going to look like, what's really two years out going to look like.
I'd be a lot richer than I am.
You know, and going back to the 1718, while our levy may be the same, the tax dollars people are paying is still higher because the valuation on their homes is higher. So we're still collecting more than 1718 at that same levy rate. And just looking at Nikki's projections and her, you know, knowing she's got seven-year spreadsheet out there, $160,000 is not going to break us by any means. And I think we'll be able to go down 10 this year and probably be flat next year instead of a 5-5. And so that's, I guess what I'm advocating is like, let's do the 10 this year, basically borrowing next year's 5.
I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I, I feel like we, we, we set out a plan for Nikki for a reason and I understand that we are continuing to drop that rate. And, you know, I would argue different things as far as loss and, you know, my own personal opinion for what we're offering with that loss funding. But regardless, I, I think that we are continuing to offer great services, yes. Maybe not the amenities that people are always looking for, but services, yes. Our, our staff has done nothing but a phenomenal job. I just feel like I haven't heard, I don't know, to, to me, it's just, I'm not as convinced that it's, it's a shift we need. But I'm not, I'm not going to vote against it either.
I guess from my perspective, 160,000 is not going to break the bank. And at the end of the day, I mean, if 10 cents allows us to get to a point where we can say politically, we're lowering your taxes, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're showing wise use of tax dollars. I think that, that's really important. We're, we're able to articulate that and then we can also, you know, gives us a little bit of time to see what's going to happen. If we stay stable, that's fine, and we can reevaluate that next year. It's not going to put you in a bad position to take it down to 10.
Just taking off the five cents, so it's a net 10 cent reduction? So yes, we can, we can undo that on the 411. I just want to make sure you're messaging for, so next year, the assumption is to reduce debt service again 10 cents? Because that's, if we're paying this stuff off, I go down another 10 cents there. So you have a guaranteed 10 cent reduction on debt service next year as well. The concern would be is if it, we have to come back up, you're going to have negatives or neutral, which is fine, other than making sure you're being, how, to explain the transparency of how did you provide me debt relief or, or a property tax relief if you didn't lower it? That's what, you know, in the mechanics of trying to make sure the layman understands what we're doing is I'm providing you tax relief? Yes, I decreased your debt or decreased your levy. So if you're not able to do that because we had to swing it back up, that will be just an explanation to make sure the public understands that. I did lower your levy and I'm doing that with a property tax relief. But yet if we don't actually change, if we're not able to actually go down, that's all I would caution you on. I'm not saying that to not make you do it, I just want to make sure politically that will be the discussion of how do we prove that we're providing property tax relief? The shuffling the buckets, you all deal with it way more than the common taxpayer is going to, so I just want to make sure that.
So you're saying it's, it's possible, it's not outside of the realm of possibility that for the next year, we lower our debt service levy by 10 cents and then raise our 411 levy by 10 cents?
Correct.
And now it's a neutral.
You may have to negate it instead of doing our guaranteed, so next year I'm not raising the 411 levy at all. We're using the loss, the excess loss to do that. So in theory, you should have a full 10 cents to reduce next year because debt service is already going down.
Right.
Short of us not using loss to pay it off, then my plan blows up. But if we continue to do that, we'll continue to go down until the debt service levy is a dollar six, I think, is what Travis projected for us. So we'll continue to go down, so, so we're still giving them taxpayer savings, we're still seeing their levy come down. I just want to caution you, if we have a bad year on valuation or anything weird, weird, I can't imagine that it would go up so much that we'd have to be stagnant, it would be something significant. But I don't have a crystal ball either, so that's, I want to make sure you always have a reduction to give them. As long as I'm paying off debt, you should see the levy go down, that's what I'm trying to provide for you.
Well, and we're still saving them 16 cents from the Dallas County fire station, I mean, we don't talk about that.
That was permanent, and that one pays off in '24.
But, I mean, that was a 10 or 20-year?
15.
15 years that they were supposed to pay 16?
Yep, 16 cents.
16 cents and they've never had to pay?
Correct.
Any of it, so we don't tell that.
We're doing property tax relief, don't worry, we are, but it's just harder to explain when their levy didn't go down, so that's all I'm saying.
And recall that the Dallas County vote did not require the property tax language. So when we went Polk County, that required the doubt, that required.
No, both of them have 50%.
But they didn't require it, the first one.
Oh, this legislature was not in place for that time, yes, that is correct.
It was the Polk County vote that said, you had a mandatory 50%. We chose to do the 50% on the first one because we know we had the fire station, so.
So 10 cents now, maybe five cents later, depends on what happens. Or 10 cents now, no change next year and then going back to our five cent reduction year over year, like what we've had. So I, I guess I just don't see how that, I, I don't know, I, I understand being able to say to people, oh yeah, we saved you 10 cents. And, you know, most people they go, well, yeah, when my valuation went up by another $20,000, so you didn't save me anything. I just, I personally like the course that we're on. We're, we're able to tell them every single year, here's your tax savings. I can show you on paper that your tax levy went down. If we ever get into a situation where now it's neutral, I can say, oh yeah, we lowered your debt, your debt service levy by 10 cents, but I did take another 10 cents and put it somewhere else to make it so where I could continue to balance the budget. I just, I personally like that we continue down that five cent road. It, it feels very simple to explain, this is my opinion.
I'll say I'm for the 10 cents. I'll just, I'm for it, I think it's, we have the, we have in the savings, I think it would be good to say that to our taxpayers. And then I, there is nothing in my mind that, and nothing I have seen that indicates that the way that our, the real estate market and everything is slowing down, it's, we're supposed to have two or three years. I think we'll have a good year next year. I think we can be a little bit generous with our property tax reduction this year.
I'm in that same camp, I'm fine with it.
So I have three yeses? Bridget, what, are you yes?
Yeah, it's fine. I, it's, I'm still burnt out from Saturday and I guess.
Glaze over.
It seems like a lot to come at us at this late in the game. So I mean, I, I guess I wish this would have been, if it was available option to us, it would have been presented as part of the initial package that was presented to us, but.
But it's a policy change. I mean, we, we, again, AJ and Nikki presented a budget based on the prior policy that we've had that they would fund essentially the 411 to that, so, I mean, I, I'm just looking at it and saying, we're going to deviate from that a little bit and, and that's why, that's what I was asking the council to consider is that we're deviating from what policy direction we've given them. It's like policy direction we give to staff on, on CIP programs and everything else. They, they prepared it based on the policy direction we've used in the past. I'm just saying, I think we have the flexibility to deviate from that a little bit this year and, and, and reduce that levy by another five cents, so.
So yes?
If you need another yes, I'll give you my yes as well. It's not going to hurt me at all.
I'd like to be, I'd, me again, at the end of the day, budget especially, I, I realize we don't all see everything I do, but I'd like to be as, have as much consensus on budget as we can.
I'll trump it up and down the hallways, tapping 10 cents all day, I'll be happy about it. I just, I don't want to have to come back next year and explain, you get nothing.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't push for any more, honestly, like I said, for, for all the reasons Nikki talked about. I don't want to, I don't want to whip sauce either, but I think, I think it's very doable, so.
Okay, I'm all for it.
Okay, I will adjust the, so your max rate levy hearing that will go to the paper, I think, yet this week, maybe, to 857 instead of 862. So all that does is lock you into, you cannot go up, but you can always go down if something happened. But this is what's published, it says what your maximum rate that you would have. So the five cents off of the 411 will come back off. Okay, so debt service, I think that was the end of internal, let's see. So local option, sales tax and the employee benefits levy, these ones are actually easier to look at in the fund summaries section. So if you go back up to the BS7. So this is the employee benefits levy. This one is at the same 10 cents that it's been. And effectively, this is doing exactly the same thing as what 411 does. It buys down the cost of the funds that have employees. So the current fiscal year that we were in, the levy was, bringing in the transfers in from lost of 400 some thousand dollars. So it was a much bigger buy-down. And so we're shifting those lost dollars, that's what I was shifting over to the 411 instead of that. So that's why there's a variation there. It's still effectively the same, it's the same 10 cents that it's always been, it's still buying down. These are employees that are in all funds, not just general fund. So it's evenly allocated to each department, it buys down equally. So we take our entire expense, we're a self-funded city, so we pay all of our insurance claims direct. So by being self-funded, we rely on that fund to pay all of that. And so that is a per-employee cost that we allocate, that's what that group insurance line is in every single department. We take the number of benefited employees in every department, divide the five and a half million dollars we pay in insurance premiums and claims a year and divide it up. So it's about $18,000 per head that we pay all types of insurance, not just health insurance or anything like that, workers' comp, all of those things. Everything goes into that. So that's what this is deriving. Once you're at 810, you get to access this levy. So that's why we tapped into that levy the first year when we had flipped everything over to 810 so that we could take a bite out of it and make sure we had something on the books in case they messed with the legislation related to that too. So there's only 10 cents in here, this is one that could be eliminated as well, if in the future you choose not to do that. This one is just harder to unwind because it touched. This one is just harder to unwind because it touches every single department in this entire book, so at this stage of the game, I'd please take it off the 411, not this one. So that's what that, that, uh, fund is doing, it's legally restricted the same way, just like a 411. I have a special revenue fund, the property tax dollars go in here, and then I transfer it out and pay the expense. So that's what this one exists for. I do show you what the total contribution in of if we were going to fund a hundred percent of what the employee benefits cost, we would need a levy of a dollar forty-seven. So that's just giving you a point of reference of what that cost, how much you could shift away from the general, if we had to. So, just from information. The next page BS eight, that is a recap of the same thing on the 411 that we just talked about. So at the bottom there, we'll just, that shows, so it'll be slightly different, I only need eleven cents towards the bottom of that informational section, that's just telling you, here's the total cost that we incur, and how much of that has been covered by the levy, how much additional we would need to do that. So that's where that out in twenty-four, we were getting back to zero. So, we'll just recalculate that, that's fine. So that was a 411, we already talked about that. The last, um, one that we haven't caught, hit on is local option, sales tax, which is the next one, it's sideways. This is the one that's in color because I wanted to actually show you how these groupings worked of what we're paying off with each of these. Just because we have a lot of exciting things out in that twenty-four year, we're finally paying off the fire station, and that's callable in that year. So those three pieces out in that out year, that's how your property tax relief is accumulating for all three of those. So some of it, um, comes out of the, the Polk County piece of it to make the difference, so I can actually call it in the, a year early. We weren't planning to pay it off until twenty-twenty-five, but because twenty-twenty-three is a light year, I end up with excess that needs to go in there. I need to get that spent in the next year. So, lost, um, just the mechanics of that, so we collect all the funds in one year, make sure what we've got, so I can retire debt and reduce your levy the next year. We don't pre-pay off debt, so, um, something that caught, I know Westemoine got caught in this as well. They, they reduced their levy before they knew what their tax collections were, and then they're short. So now I've reduced my levy and I don't have enough money to make that up. So, we have, from the very beginning, when loss started coming in, we collected first, and I pay off after that. So it's important then that I true that up at the end of every fiscal year, so I know exactly how many dollars I have to spend to make sure we're hitting our, fifty percent has to be property tax relief, in this stage, a hundred percent is being used for that. So that's why we're going ahead and using the dollars so that we're meeting our obligations. But I added that extra comp, that won't be in the final document, I just wanted you guys to see how that stuff is going through. And the other huge perk of that is the, the Merle Hay sanitary sewer stormwater project that came through, that orange color, that's what we're using that excess, we are only paying off three point four million in that year. So we were able to snag those because fifty percent can be used for a capital project, so this is the first one of the, this is a big tangible thing that lost, kind of bailed us out, because we don't, we didn't have debt service available to do that, so we're able to use that in that year. So that satisfies, that is the one year you won't spend a hundred percent on property tax relief, because we're actually doing a capital project. But I would have had to issue debt for it, so, in effect, it's the same thing, but I'm actually cash flowing that project.
Just a, the sound, this is probably gonna be a dumb question, but just asking, just curious. So when the fire station's paid off on Dallas County, the Dallas County loss funds, we don't have to use it in Dallas County, it can be citywide, okay?
Yep, it's all citywide, yep. The other thing that I throw in there that, with the question mark there is that this is your backup for the airport funding. That would be an eligible use of that too, to pay that earlier, so remember, we're committed to a six-year on the, what was it, three point?
One point three.
One point three, sorry.
Over six years.
I'm suddenly giving them a raise. Two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, that, um, the committee met and talked about that, that we wanted to use that, that's in the economic development budget for the current budget that we're talking about, the twenty-three budget. We can continue to pay it out of there, so that means general fund is paying that. But, in the future, we could use local option, sales tax to do that, because the Polk County side has any lawful purpose. So it's in there as a placeholder in case we don't want to see it continue to go out, or you want to prepay it. That is a viable option, not gonna talk about that till twenty-four, because I don't have cash to do it today. But, we, we could get there, because the, we're paying off the fire station bonds early. Those pieces come out, but this is only eligible for the Polk County piece, because that's the only referendum language that had any lawful purpose in there. It also includes economic development, which clearly this falls in that bucket as well, so you could use both, but it's cleanest in Polk County. So that's why it's in there, but we're not locked into that by any means. The stuff on the bottom of that is just showing where your property tax reduction pieces have impacted, so we have a cumulative forty-eight cents reduction by the impacts that we've had with the local option, sales tax dollars. So that's just, this is my visual on showing how we're showing that relief.
I'm not seeing where that forty, okay, sorry.
To the left column, it adds to the left instead of to the right, it's kind of backwards, but. So that original sixteen cents, Bridgette, that you mentioned on there, that never actually was levied from us, we never issued it and paid it off. So we include it because it was inherently part of it, so that continues on until we get rid of that. Does that make sense? Do we have questions on that? There's a lot that goes into some of these, these are, these are the shell game ones of, it has to come here and it has to come here, and this is, you know. At the end of the day, you don't care about that, you just want to balance the budget, but I have to mechanically show you how that works to make it flow through the state forms, the state forms are so fun.
We raise your comfort level for about a week, and then for fifty-one weeks, it go, it disappears, and then you go through the same exercise next year, nope?
Yeah.
Maybe two days.
That is the last one that I, that we need to talk through for department-wise, sorry, that really took longer than I thought it was going to. But, just to recap the changes that we had, I think is the last thing that we normally would run through. We didn't have much, other than today's discussion, we have the hundred thousand dollars going for the van in this fiscal year, going ahead and allocating the thirty-five for MAC, and then the recreation for the adding back the holiday lights of the, of the twenty thousand. So, in, in talking about that, we had a lot that was going on on Saturday, and so I asked staff to pull that together to show, make sure we understand. So it's forty thousand dollar total project to make that holiday lights go. We, they asked for it in two separate years to make it a little bit, easily, uh, bite off in little chunks, I guess. So half of it in there, so we, we'd only talked about the twenty, but the whole project is forty. And I just wanted to make sure that we were understanding what we're getting, I don't want you to be underwhelmed by the, like, we're all super excited about this, and it's not gonna be the giant thing in year one, unless we're moving all the funding up, so I wanted to clarify that. What do you want?
So we want to see big this year or next year, is what you're saying, big this year or next year?
Well, this is the big, no, I don't know, what are we gonna call it, big miracle, it's Miracle on Eighty-Six Street. If you wanted to go all in, they're still gonna pursue sponsorships and all of that stuff to try to make it go, kind of think like Jolly Holiday Lights, how you have the, here, Mid-Am, you can buy me this awesome thing, and I will stick a sign on that says, this is brought to you by whatever. Totally open to all of those ideas, but the base stuff, so a lot of it would be the, you know, think the.
The electrical work and all the other things that they demonstrated, but we were talking and we thought, did you guys pick up on that it's forty total, but we were gonna do?
Twenty and twenty.
Twenty and twenty, and you, you guys had a lot of enthusiasm, we thought, we better come back and just, just to make sure that when your expectation was there was twelve lights figures out there, and there's only four, we're gonna go, what was going on? So again.
More like probably one in year one, so, I just want to make.
I was gonna say, I feel like year one's gonna be like.
It's gonna be a light year, that's what I just wanted, you were talking about wanting to spend a hundred and sixty, so I bring that up as the, hmm.
Well, I mean, I want people to be really excited about this and come back every year, so, what's the, I mean, to me, in the grand scheme of things, to spend forty thousand dollars does not seem like a big deal.
If you want the wow factor year one, we need to put it all in one year.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
Because we can incrementally grow it.
We have thirty-six not spent this year in community.
And, and that's another, that's another great point, is because this is, how the committee wants to say this is community services, this is bringing the community together too. Would it be eligible, that's up to you guys, I mean, there is no policy discussion as far as a restriction, legal restriction, nothing.
We have thirty-six unspent, might as well take.
But I, but I guess I look at it, it, I think there's gonna be some hurdles they're gonna have to work through to get this up and going, whether it's the electrical, whether it's design, whether, and, it's, you know, building a year one, year two, I think year two is going to be better if we build it into, in two years versus trying to do it all at once. Because how do, how do people park, where are they at, where are they walking from? That first year learning curve is gonna make that second year much better if we build it into it versus just all try to make it perfect. I mean, you look at Jolly Holiday Lights, when it moved to Adventureland versus what it is now, year one at Adventureland was not good, year two at Adventureland it was better, that's the kind of history, I guess, I see of something like this.
But I don't think people are gonna come back if all we have is, you know, one snowflake sitting out there.
I think that was staff's concern too, is the, but if you don't have a wow factor the first year, parking may suck, and we'll figure it out, just like National Night Out, that kind of stuff. Logistics stuff is a lot different than infrastructure stuff, if they have just, yeah, one snowglobe, one snowglobe or an arch, and that's it. Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's a pretty significant, like, intro stuff, so I'm afraid if we don't, the underwhelming part of, what was that? Why would I go back again, kind of approach, if somebody shows up and is like, okay, that's like my backyard.
They went off at nine-thirty instead?
I'd be willing to take twenty out of this thirty-six unspent community grant funds to fund the other half of it, so you could buy it.
So we have forty thousand to work with for this year.
Forty, this.
So, so he's saying of the thirty-nine.
Twenty, property tax, twenty lost.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what that would end up being.
And then this, this fiscal year, you could do twenty of it, correct?
Yes, so we would keep the twenty in their budget for the next budget year, which both will still affect the, the winter that we're talking about.
So the December of twenty-two, you'll have a project. You have a forty thousand dollar project in place.
Correct, funded through two different fiscal years.
Molly's got it. So now, what other departments are gonna want to come next year on Monday? And try to ask for money, seeing as how? And how more, many more times is Jen gonna be gone during budget, because now her department got more than she asked for?
Yeah, but she did pay for the cheesy cookies you got, I mean, they weren't her, they weren't her homemade cookies, but. No, the point is, is that when we were looking at that, and we thought, you, again, you were so enthusiastic about it, and we thought, okay, did they really catch on that that was going to be just half and half? And we started thinking, we better, we better come back and clarify that with you, because again, if your expectations were this, and we brought you this.
I would have been pretty disappointed to walk up and seen a snowflake and that's it, I'll be honest.
We thought that might be the reaction, and especially, again, I appreciate that each year you can do different things with sponsorships and everything. But there's a point of, if you're gonna make a splash, you want to make that initial statement, like, I think that's what we were looking at, is that, boom, we're here. And we're gonna give you something really neat, and if we can make it better, so be it, whether through city funds or donations, but we're gonna give you that, boy, did the city hit it right.
Go big or go home.
That's right.
I want the big ornament for the record, I like.
Now the argument's gonna be, what do we buy?
I think that would be awesome for the family.
Yeah, but, okay, so the forty thousand there, got it.
There you go, see, I can spend money when I need to, I think it's an awesome idea as well, I just want it to be successful to not have a, eh.
Right.
Parking logistics, we can work through that, we've got walking, just like National Night Out, think of, or trunk or treat, the first year trunk or treat.
National Night Out.
Oh my gosh, that was a disaster out here with logistics. But it was a wow event, and everybody came back.
You bring eighty to ninety cars in here for movie nights, and obviously they're stagnant, but we've worked those things out, we have the space, we know how to move people around, and, you know, we've done a pretty decent job with it, we've learned some, so.
All right, I think that's all I have for changes. Did you have anything that I missed?
I got so many papers, should we circle back to the wifi in parks thing, or is that done?
Well, what we had down there was the three parks, we had Barrett-Bosin, Murphy, and the regional park.
Wait, so we, we said we are doing those three parks?
That's what we had done.
I thought we were, I thought we were coming back to that after, after we talked about the mobile map.
Well, those are the three that we had on our notes, but if you want to come back to it, certainly.
I guess, the afternoon numbers, I thought we took out what, Regional Park and put in the Shelter at Lyons Park.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that's part of our budget, that's not additional, I'm just trying to figure out.
Right, so it would've been Centennial and Bosin would've been the two, at the Centennial Shelter at Lyons Park, which is kind of more up by the high school.
Yeah.
In the corner.
And Barrett-Bosin would've been the two we went after, because those are the twenty-ish thousand dollar ones, and then Murphy came in really high, and, and the Regional Park came in really high with the afternoon numbers. So it was really two parks.
Oh, didn't we say the dog park too?
Yeah.
Didn't you say it was like a?
I meant it was a mile.
That's a, yeah, a mile.
That was a long way to get hooked up. Three different parks, east, central, and west, is my recollection.
We did, and. We did, the afternoon numbers changed my mindset, I guess, but I thought we.
I had circled Murphy and Barrett-Bosin.
Right, but Murphy's number.
Murphy went up to like thirty, no, thirty-nine thousand, I think.
Okay, yeah, so, Centennial was seven thousand six hundred and ninety. The Bosin was eight thousand five hundred and thirty.
And Bosin should have been in the bid for the Bosin Park stuff, so it should have been the CIP, I thought, the conduit was there.
The infrastructure's going in with it, yes, correct, correct, it's just adding the stuff to the actual facility. So Barrett, yes, Centennial, yes, what was the third one that you?
And I guess I was just at the two, the others were all forty-ish thousand dollar spends.
Okay.
So Murphy and Dog got taken off because of the adjusted cost, is that correct?
Walker Johnson is only thirteen, which isn't too much more than the other ones.
But I thought they had something at, we just gotta check to see what's there.
Yeah.
There is, there is, we found out, I talked to James this morning, that there is a MediaCom.
Hot spot.
Hot spot.
Yes, there are actually, there's two out on Douglas and one on a pole that they have control of, the park, through, through their relationship with Mid-Am. And it gets back to exactly what you said, that they offer MediaCom customers the ability to log on, and if you're not, it's essentially a free thirty, and then after that, it's, you lose the signal, or you pay as you go, or. I, I don't know the particular arrangements on that.
What happened to us, so.
But it's, um, there is something there for other people. We had dealt with that, the salesman from MediaCom, because Jamons and I were brainstorming this morning, he goes, about two years ago, there was a gentleman very active with the softball group, and he happened to be a vice president with MediaCom. He pitched it to us, and we said, no, we're not really interested in getting, you know, with your particular company, we're just, we're not there yet, we'll make a decision. But, since they have an independent relationship with, um, Mid-Am, they went ahead and, and placed whatever the mechanism on those poles. So they're providing it really without our permission, but they don't need our permission because it's not on our polls. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we can't control the wireless networks anyway, because the right-of-way and all those issues were taken away from us about four or five years ago by the legislature.
So I'd be willing, personally, I think Walker Johnson's most, are probably our most visited park, I'd be willing to do the thirteen thousand, to add that to the, as the third park. And that way, we get a little bit more west there too, because the other two are, that's just, don't worry about it.
Yeah, Bosin is one hundred and fifty-six.
Oh yeah, shoot, yeah, I was switching it with something else in my head, yes. So that way, we get our east, our middle, east-west ends.
But doesn't, wasn't there a question about how, I mean, how do you broadcast it to the whole, through the whole Walker Johnson park?
And, and I think it was.
It would be effectively the concession stand, is what.
Yes, you would take it to concession stand, because if you would look at where the potential larger group of audience would be, it would be at that location.
It's not a, a park-wide, it's just concession stand spot.
I'm sorry?
Right.
Kid looking at TikTok in the outfield.
You're playing with sand.
As I said, they're already playing with the dirt, so.
Fly over, I mean.
Yeah, it would have limited broadcast to that general, like, that paved area up there by the shade structure.
I'm sure it wouldn't get you over into the tennis courts, and it wouldn't get you over to the pond or into the new field that we're building, but again.
Thousand feet from the concession stand.
It seems to be an area where you're gonna generate on a normal year, a great deal of traffic. And again, the park is seasonal, of course, except for Walker, except for the shelter, which has its own wifi to it. So, you know, it's, biggest bang for your buck, you're still gonna go at the concession area for the song.
And Jovanetti, does that get out into, like, between Jovanetti and the pond, it doesn't, like, where those?
It, it doesn't like where those.
Structure itself in that patio area, they specifically have it.
So they, those picnic tables that are to the south of there, they don't, they can't catch that signal there?
No.
Nope. It's, it's identified specifically for the rental use. So they don't have people sucking off the wifi while you're trying to do a reception or whatever you're doing in there.
And the library comes out into the parking lot somewhat, but our goal was to put it out into the patio. When we were seeing more use there during the spring and summer. And that was the request we were getting, gee, we're not getting really good reception. And it was a minimal amount, I mean, like thousand to 1,500 dollars to push it out there. So that was an easy decision, just to do real quick and they, they did that, so.
Okay, so I have three, Walker Johnson, Centennial and Barrett.
And is this going to put an end to the wifi then? Because after this, it gets pretty expensive. Or are we thinking of doing more projects per year?
Do we just see what the market does and?
Yeah, my initial is as we, as we approach parks, that's when the decision's made. Do you add wifi now that we're going into South Karen Acres with a new flushable toilet and we're doing all the construction? Do you add it, yes or no?
So this is just going to be on an as needed basis, it's not going to.
And it, and you see, you know, did people actually use it at Walker Johnson? Did people actually use it at Centennial? Or is it, hey, it's a service nobody's using, so we don't need to continue extend this?
And that's kind of what I'm thinking is like, I would like to, to me, these are the low hanging fruit ones. We can see if they're widely used, then we can maybe get more aggressive with it if it's actually a used service.
Bridgette's comment here of, and hopefully we promote it. We'll, we'll keep getting Derek more work.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we promote it. And one of the things we can do with Walker Johnson is that you can always make it available through the rental things that you have. And by the way, we now have wifi. And at the end, kind of a survey, was this valuable to you?
Right.
Did you use it? And, you know, that's one way to measure it.
Well, because I was thinking from more of the perspective of we're looking at costs, but if we're looking at trying to do multiple parks over the years, it wouldn't be a bad idea necessarily if we felt strongly about one of the other parks to, to take a bigger bite. If we, you know, if, if we were planning on it again, spreading this out over multiple years. Not saying that we have to hit those really small ones right away. We could also take one that if we felt passionately about it, that's the only reason why I bring it up.
Yep.
Let's just watch the metrics and see how it goes.
Yeah, and in the CIP, Park and Rec has kind of put a placeholder in of adding utilities to parks. They haven't defined what utilities are.
Yeah.
Right.
And again, one of the, one of the ways we broke it down was flushables, flushable toilets.
Yeah.
Theoretically, you'll get more use at a facility that has more modern amenities.
When there's a place to protect the.
And then inside where you protect the equipment.
If you're, if you're digging, I mean, to Adam's point, if you're putting in utilities, throw another piece of conduit in there and then it's available at least. So if we're digging already, 100%, and then you can decide based on those metrics if, wow, we really want it in Murphy Park. $35,000, heck with that, we're still going to do it.
Yeah.
That's a decision that you can absolutely make. As they come forward though, I would definitely assume we're going to bring it to you saying, here's the construction cost. Does it make sense? I mean, utilities at the road or utilities are a mile away.
Yeah.
That's a huge impact, so, but if we're digging already, we might as well dig what we need to dig.
From a construction standpoint, it's not a very large feature of an overall project.
Right.
Right.
The enclosed structure, I think, was Jane, the IT, from IT's perspective, having an enclosed structure already there is, is a much bigger concern than just running conduit. We have to, that's where your cost comes in.
So Centennial, Boson and Walker Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other topics that you guys want to discuss before we wrap up?
Well, I guess I'm still super excited about the Big Mac van. And so, well, that'll come to us to approve the purchase of it.
Yeah, so we'll go out for bids.
And then can we have like a, maybe a rendering of the, of the wrap at that time? Okay, and, and I guess based on our excitability about it being an electric van, if somehow we can have that, I don't know.
A ribbon cutting?
No, no, but have that like denoted on the van that.
Yeah, this is an all-electric van.
Yes.
Let the public know you're electric.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the, the dark buses, you know, you know they're. I just, I just want to make sure that it's, people on the van know, or people seeing the van know that it's an electric.
These, these two, just ignore them. Yes, well, I understand your message completely is that, yeah, the goal is obviously through your strategic planning and your discussion for the last day and a half, is that having a greener footprint and demonstrating to the community that you're putting your money where your mouth is, so to speak. That you are advertising that we're now, we're providing an additional service to our children of the community and we're approaching it in a green manner.
The only, I agree with that 100%. The only thing I heard was we may need to use a generator for some of the programs, but I would hope we wouldn't have to use a gas generator with an electric van. That's the only thing, so.
You got Molly's word on it.
Draw the power out of the parks or whatever, yeah. That's the only, that's, that's the only contrarian message.
Maybe we can get us a mascot like Sparky and it's just, anyway, sorry, I'm done.
Okay, now we're.
Electric truck, like, weren't they powering the entire house with that thing?
We can do flat mat. We can do flat mat with a light.
Can they rename him Sparky?
Yeah, there we go.
There you go.
We've already replaced with a light bulb, it's good.
Put a light bulb on, okay.
And all attribution for Big Mac comes to me, I mean.
No. No, that's fine. I think, and all, we will get a hold of the news media outlets, we'll try to make as big a deal as possible because it is a big deal.
No, I, I mean, I'm super excited about the whole program and that we're, if, that we're able to do it in an electric van is just icing on the.
Yeah.
I mean, I just like have memories of as a kid, like going to these like kind of pop-up things in the park. And I just think it's going to be a really fantastic program. I mean, especially going all over our city, it's a community building, um, connecting people with the city in a positive way. Great.
All right. We good? Well, I'm, I've got about seven piles of notes here and Curtis was, was nice enough to give me some notes as well, but they. Here it is. I'm looking for the ones that are, we have a whole list of follow-ups. And what we'll do is that we'll provide you the, the list of follow-ups so you guys all agree as to what we had to follow up that are non-monetary. Programs, meetings, those type of things, things you want to see. So we have that.
Oh, I have one, I suppose. And it caused a little, I wouldn't say it was friction, but I kind of got like, because I kept saying, where's like, where's this plan on stormwater? And it's like, it's in the CIP, it's in the CIP. I would, maybe we could have kind of laid out outside of the CIP, like this is our 20-year plan with the programs and these are targeted. Just because I think that was the disconnect for me is that I just haven't seen anything laid out, like this is our 30-year plan to tackle all these projects. Oh, I mean, putting in the CIP is fine, but to me, that's not overly transparent. So that's something I'll lunch and learn at some point in time that I would like to see that we could maybe roll out and just kind of make it easier, more transparent. Something we could also maybe provide to the community as well.
Under stormwater timeline for stormwater projects east of 86, revisit timeframe, CIP project update list them.
Is that, oh, it's already been covered.
Yeah, then I had that, but thank you for reminding me.
That was me vocalizing.
It is, it's, it's one of those things that, and this, it's when we're doing the projects for CIP or for council for the budget, it's more of a, an explanation of how we operate again. And I know you, you guys have heard it before, we have small timeframes that we work within that are very condensed. And we wait for the, the evaluations to come in at the end of December and we do the reviews and we balance vacations and everything else. So we appreciate your comments that if we've missed something or we haven't made it as clear as possible for you to feel comfortable, let us know. And we'll try to tweak those as best we can, but we'll have, we have pretty thin margins. And I say that on defense of Nikki and her staff and everybody else who works on it. Because again, like I've told all of you, our job is to make your job easier in making these decisions and to keep it as transparent as possible. Sometimes, again, when you walk through an hour and a half of financial information once a year, it can be a little overwhelming. So we appreciate that, but again, we run pretty thin here. And I just, it's kind of, it's editorial on the work that they do in their office. But at the same time, I certainly appreciate the comments we heard. And our job is to make those alterations and as best we can and so they can fit together. So we'll need your cooperation. So when we call a meeting, we want you all to show up too.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Not an item on there, but the, as council, since we don't have our iPads, I don't know how many actually check your council email, but we got an email on tree removal around Alpine, 79th and Alpine in Parkview Townsend area. So a citizen asking what was going on there. So I assume forward that email to.
Yeah, just throw it my way.
AJ and then he responds, so.
Did it come to any staff members?
Nope, just the five council got onto it. Bob has even ignored.
We'll deal with it tomorrow. We.
AJ?
Yep.
Those, those were, those were ash, those were ash trees that got removed.
Oh, we initiated them?
Yep. Yeah, I, we, I'm guessing that's what those are. We, we did like six ash trees in last week in some spots. So that's what it was, is, is removing all the ash trees that have been either infected or soon to be infected.
That's what I assumed, but I just wanted to make sure that response is coordinated. So it's now in AJ's email box.
So we'll talk tomorrow, Scott.
Yep, I'm guessing it'll be in my ebo, email box before you go home.
Sure, we could just.
Week, weekend.
All right, I just want to say again, thank you. Real quick, real, a reminder on the, uh, just had another note here on the, um, the fee for, uh, solid waste, yeah, so that we under. Dollar 50 is going to go up, we'll put together an explanation for the public and as possible. That was the only other fee reminded one that I had. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
Thank you all.
I just want to say thanks. Thanks to, thanks to our staff for, as AJ alluded to, this takes months and months of preparation. This doesn't just happen. So thanks to AJ and Nikki and the entire staff, all the department heads for, for doing this and, and enduring this for a day and a half. Thanks for the time everybody put in to do this, because this is, this is important work. So I just want to say thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.